Friends, um, I will go ahead and call tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
I'm here.
Hartmeier Prigg.
Here.
Hassan.
Present.
Kimmy.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Tivnan.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here.
All right, uh, tonight we're going to start with visitor comment with the anticipation of our, uh, email load today. Uh, we'll have two minutes to address the council when I call your name. As a reminder, public hearing is a vital part of how we do business, but it is a time for us to hear from you, not dialogue. So follow up is needed from any of tonight's public comment or city manager and city attorney are, I'm sorry, recorder are waiting to do any follow up. Uh, with that, uh, when we call your name, you'll have two minutes. And we'll go ahead and start tonight with Spencer. And if you want to talk, just raise your hand.
Uh, thank, uh, thank you, Mayor Beatty. Can you hear me all right?
Yep. Go ahead.
I'm, uh, Spencer Ehrman. I'm a resident of Beaverton. And I'm, uh, speaking tonight in that capacity. Uh, I'm not speaking tonight as, um, uh, vice chair of, uh, the Human Rights Advisory Commission. Um, I believe that there is undue haste in council tonight, um, considering the, uh, intergovernmental agency agreement between, uh, uh, the Beaverton Police Department and the school district. Um, there has not been sufficient time, um, for, uh, uh, boards and commissions and other interested, uh, community members to review, uh, the IGA. This has been an ongoing issue, um, uh, how to notify, uh, citizens, residents and, uh, boards and commissions of pending items. Excuse me, I met with Cia Lindstrom, um, last October and discussed how boards and commissions might be given advanced notice of matters that come before council in which those, uh, parties have an interest. It should come as no surprise that this IGA falls into that category. I'm aware that H RAC has discussed the, um, Y S O program at every meeting they've held this year. And in April, two members of H RAC met with Chief Jepson and Captain Mastropolito to discuss it. Since tonight's agenda was published just a few days ago, H RAC hasn't had time to meet and agree on a position to a position on the ordinance. To emphasize my point, there should be a resource that informs any board or commission when a matter of interest is being considered. Let's please work together to make that happen. I'm aware that at least one H RAC member will have individual non-H RAC comments to make tonight. And I hope you'll seriously consider them as I find the agreement to be deficient in several areas. But that's not my point here. What I'm hoping is that this item can be held over for a couple of weeks until H RAC and perhaps other interested parties can present feedback. I know that the school district is voting on the, uh, agreement, um, in a concurrent meeting. So I'm hoping that you can contact them and ask them to hold it over as well. Um, I direct my comments, um, to city manager Hari, Hariyama, um, as well as, um, to you, Mayor Beatty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy French, you'll have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. Uh, Kathy French, I am a member of the H RAC, but as usual, I'm speaking for myself here. But I do believe we have been, um, very engaged in policing and community safety. And H RAC needs to make a group response to this. So I'm going to talk fast because I have three comments to make. The first one is about uniforms. Uh, the the school district, uh, said that they would like people, the police to be dressed down as Hillsborough are uh, in our schools and dressed down does not mean without weapons. It means looking as if you're not absolutely out to, to, uh, meet a criminal. And so I myself have a teenager here who's terrified of police. And I wish you to change the uniform, dress them down a bit. Uh, the other thing I'd like to say is that there's, is that, um, the Y S Os need to communicate with parents and students more so that students and parents know all of their roles of the police and what they are going to be doing. And the third thing is, police should be there in their area of expertise and not in the areas of mental health, teaching about human development and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce Stevens, when you're ready to go?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Greetings, Madam Mayor, City Councilor, City Officials, and fellow Beaverton citizens. On the agenda is the issue of funding school resource officers. The role of officers in the schools of Beaverton was studied and published, this you know. Noted in those findings was a study published by the Journal of the American Medical Association, which reviewed every school shooting from nineteen eighty to two thousand nineteen and found that schools with armed force on site had almost tripled the death rate. This you know. You do not know that one day, as a single parent, in the grind of sending my kids to school, I got a text from my youngest son that he was okay out of the clear blue sky. And then the news coverage started. There was an incident at his school, one near fatality. He was not injured by the weapon that day, but he was and is forever changed. His story is his to tell. And now you know someone this has happened to. You know me and have for years. You know my work ethic and character. You know I am telling the truth when I say it can happen here. I am not saying that correlation is the same as causation. I am saying there is correlation. And if having armed officers decreased the body count, the forty year study would show that, and it shows the opposite. Instead of doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome, why not try the recommendation in the JAMA study? The majority of shooters who target schools are students of the school calling into question the effectiveness of hardened security and active shooter drills. Instead of schools must invest resources to prevent shootings before they occur. Thank you for your time tonight. History has its eyes on you.
All right, uh, up next, we're going to switch. Are we ready to take, uh, the testimony from the person in the building or do you want me to wait?
Yes, Mayor, he's ready.
Well, we'll give him the, uh, Bruce, you're up next.
Good evening, uh, this is Bruce McLaughlin. I was here two weeks ago and I, first of all, um, Your Honor, the mayor and honorable city council members. First of all, I wanted to let you know I'm old Beaverton. Been here sixty-three years, grew up on Parkway. Know all the, the Bee Gees, grew up with them, the Peter Courts, Hollands. I want to say that I melted down two weeks ago because I was a basket case. I'm not much better now because three of the worst nights I experienced and my neighbors experienced were the last two weeks. Now supposedly this has come to an end in our neighborhood. I don't believe it for a second. All that equipment is staged right where it was, right in front of my house, right along my street. And they still drag it out when they're working during the day, early in the morning, then drag it back at night. So I don't believe for a second they're done working at night. But you know what? You're just going to move it somewhere else. I got contacted by the Public Works Officer for you guys. Came out and met with me and I grabbed a couple of my neighbors and he was informed of all that we've been going through. And he gave me the number for the contractor and I could call him at three o'clock in the morning. Well, I did. Nothing changed, absolutely nothing changed. And your Public Works guy stopped returning any calls. It never took another call, returned a call for me or text message. Now, this is more than about ribbon cutting and, you know, groundbreaking. I've been through it. I, I worked in United States Congress. I spoke some pretty heavy experiences. Nelson Mandela's inauguration, a guest at the South African Embassy for that. But it's more than proclamations. It's more than ribbon cutting and groundbreaking. It's what you guys, the decisions you make that affect the people that live here. And you just can't pawn it off at a city manager to do the right thing. He doesn't have to run for public office. You hire him. Please do something, consider the decisions you make a little more carefully. My life has suffered. My work has suffered. My clients' cases have suffered. I'm a practicing attorney. And I crash by noon because I've been up all night not getting a REM sleep. And I'm unable to work in the afternoon. I hope it's better, but I'll believe it when I see it. Thank you, Council, Your Honor, Mayor.
Right, uh, Jennifer?
Hello. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you regarding the IGA agreement with BSD in the city. I urge you not to move forward on the IGA as is currently structured. Please take into account the recommendations that came from the report produced by Sea Change. We had a painful experience with Beaverton P D and the BSD last year with our eleven-year-old autistic daughter. I wrote you about this situation earlier this year. I looked at that Sea Change report and how their recommendations applied specifically to what happened to us. And I'm here to express my concerns because you are not implementing those changes. Our daughter has a file with the Washington County Juvenile Department. Even though the police department has informed me the report on her was done in error. It broke our trust with BSD. It was disturbing and shocking. As I shared with you in my letter and email, Beaverton P D also made an error and released our daughter's name and address during a public records request for automobile accidents. B P D has apologized for this. Even with the list of trainings that you now have, I see no training for working with children with autism. Use of SROs creates an intersection of the police department, the school district, and the county's juvenile department. And this bureaucracy has meant that my daughter still has a file with juvenile, even though it was a mistake. These are big systems that do not manage individual needs well. It is fraught to me to engage the police in a disabled child situation. It creates an ecosystem that leads to a school-to-prison pipeline. There's not enough data being tracked on SR use. I asked B P D specifically about data on kids with disabilities and I was told there is none being tracked. Please adjust this IGA to not have SROs involved in threat assessments that are not serious or in cases of mental health need. Please have real data collected and made available to the public. You need to do better. This was a terrible situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy?
Hello, I am Dr. Tammy Carpenter and I was recently elected to serve on the Beaverton School Board. I will take my place there in ten days, but I am speaking tonight in my own capacity as a member of this community. I have read through much of the Sea Change Report. It is very thorough and provides many recommendations to help us move towards providing a holistic sense of safety for our school community. Unfortunately, none of those recommendations are included in this proposed IGA. And some might say, Tammy, you just got elected to the school board. You have four years to create change. Be patient. Others might say, Tammy, but this proposed IGA will only be in effect for two years. You will have two years to make it better. Be patient. And yet others, Tammy, what if we keep the status quo for just one more year until we figure out how to implement those changes? Can't you wait for one year? Be patient. I met a constituent a few weeks ago, a woman of color who bent my ear about the need for change. And I am super grateful for her sense of urgency. She shared a famous, um, quote by James Baldwin to remind me that we have no time to waste. I have no time to waste. James Baldwin was a black writer and thinker from fifty years ago who said to a white audience, "You always told me it takes time. It has taken my father's time, my mother's time, my uncle's time, my brothers and sisters' time, my nieces and nephews' time. How much time do you want for your progress?" Um, so what do we do? What do you do? I feel strongly that this is a moment right now that doesn't come along very often. In a perfect world, we would pull together a task force to spend every minute between now and then to develop a program that better meets the needs of our community. I'm game if you are. But I'm not game for the status quo. To quote our esteemed school superintendent, Dr. Valderas, "At Beaverton School District, all students belong. We embrace, honor, and celebrate our differences, race, color, ethnicity, nationality, religion, disability, sexual orientation, gender identity, and language. We are committed to eliminating the structures, policies, and practices to perpetuate inequalities in our school and causes these differences to become predictors of future success." At BSD, all students are learners capable of limitless possibilities. I hope you all share the school district's commitment to eliminating barriers to equity. And I implore you to act quickly because we have no more time to wait for progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Good evening. Today I've come to ask that you vote against the draft IGA for Y S Os. In twenty twenty, following national protests, Beaverton residents demanded a more accountable and more transparent police department, including the SRO program. Instead of taking action then, the city spent a hundred thousand dollars for an independent review of the SRO program. While the independent review proposed a number of substantive changes, the draft IGA you're considering tonight includes virtually none of them. And in some cases directly contradicts recommendations. Specific scope for law enforcement, not implemented. A prohibition on SRO discipline, not implemented. A restriction for SRO, on SRO's involvement in mental health crises, not implemented. Requiring city council oversight, not implemented. Requiring additional training, not implemented. Hillsborough has implemented all of these reforms. This isn't radical. This is the bare minimum. Simply put, passing this draft IGA without any substantive changes is not reforming the SRO program. It's kicking the can down the road. Tonight, you are the last barrier for this IGA to pass. And so you have a choice. You can vote no and say that enough is enough, that the words you put in your proclamations actually mean something and that it's time for basic reforms. Or you can vote yes and, and choose to continue doing what the city has done for the last two years. Perpetually reviewing a program, kicking the problem down the road again and again and again. All the while, we will continue, all the while, students will continue to be harmed on your watch. Your action is actively harmful. You can't wait two years and see what happens. You can't trust the school district implement reforms after the fact if those reforms are not explicitly in the IGA. You can't pass this IGA and call it reform. I'll leave you with the words of then candidate Lacy Beatty in twenty twenty. Let us find the courage to fight for a better system and for a better country for all. Find the courage. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Johnson?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
You can.
My name is Amy Johnson. I'm a resident of Beaverton, a parent of a Beaverton School District student and an alternate member of the Climate Action Task Force. I would first like to say as an individual and a BSD parent, not part of, not related to my position on the task force, that I would ideally like to see the removal of SROs from schools. A one-point-three-million-dollar IGA for youth service officers sounds out of place right now, given that the community has had to give up library services because of budget shortfalls. Barring cessation of the program, you should at least be implementing the major recommendations of the consultants that the city hired to review the program last year, such as expanding student access to mental and behavioral health and wellness services that don't involve police, only allowing officers to be involved in cases of extreme violence. And this will prevent the school-to-prison pipeline. With that said, the reason I'm actually here, uh, the reason I'm here tonight is to remind you of the recommendations of the Climate Action Task Force. I guess it's my second reason. Um, I didn't know the IGA was on the same agenda. Um, and I do speak on the task force behalf. First, we asked you to, in December, we asked you, we presented to this body, and I'm reminding you of our recommendations. First, create a dedicated climate fund, adopting one or more alternative revenue options as you plan for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. We had asked for that for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, and our recommendation still stands. Second, develop and implement a climate lens for city projects and decision-making, a framework that would be used for validating projects and that would prioritize climate action and inform the allocation of resources. Third, create a culture of responsibility. Create benchmarks for measuring progress against the climate action plan and dedicate staff resources to meeting climate goals. And we've, we presented with you to some alternative revenue sources that are options and I emailed you my written-out testimony. So I'll just end by saying we cannot address this crisis without adequate planning or adequate funding, and we cannot continue to claim lack of funding when urgent action is needed now. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabdi?
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Good evening. My name is Sabdi Pacheco-Williams, a resident of Beaverton and a BSD parent of two young boys. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight, though openly, most of you know me as the current Chair of the Human Rights Advisory Commission. In brief, I'm echoing the sentiments of both Spencer, Kathy, and so many of my fellow commenters this evening. I'm asking this evening that council vote no on the city and B P D Y S O IGA and instead allow time for review and editing so it better reflects the work of organizations who have worked so hard to make recommendations for this program, including but not limited to H RAC commissions going back all the way to twenty twenty after the murder of George Floyd and Sea Change, the organization that was hired to research our Y S O program, listen to our community's needs and experiences, and make official recommendations. A handful of concerns include reporting cadence, which should be monthly, ensuring that those reports are made available to the public, a detailed definition of extreme violence, a plan for training around youth interactions, and a plan for trauma and special needs training. Just to name a few. This is being rushed, and it feels as if such a central issue to the Beaverton community was done in secret. And such an important document deserves more time to ensure it protects all of our city's children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Thien?
Hello, uh, my name is Thien, I mean, sorry. Hello, uh, Mayor Lacy Beatty and fellow council members. Uh, my name is Thien. My pronouns are he and him, and I'm one of the field organizers with Apano. That's the Asian-Pacific-American Network of Org. We are a culturally specific organization that unites Asian and Pacific Islanders to build power, develop leaders, and advance equity through organizing advocacy, community development, and cultural work. I'm here to speak on behalf of them, and I would like to urge you to vote no on this IGA as schools should be a place where students can learn and not deal with the stress and trauma SROs bring. SROs disproportionately affect marginalized communities the most, and they do not feel, make us feel safer, but the opposite. Placing armed police in schools does not make students or staff safer and doesn't address the root causes of behavioral issues. In fact, the presence of school police associated with lower student attendance increased school suspension and lost instructional time, barrier to graduating on time, and increased arrests of both major and minor behavior. There's also studies that point to the unfair policing towards students of color who are now the majority in the Beaverton School District. If the school district would like to help serve their students better, we should not be investing in this. As you, you've heard from other people, a local reporter, a local consulting firm states, while police based in schools have supported many people's sense of safety, police have threatened the safety of others, including non-binary LGBTQIA+ Black and other students of color. Um, sorry, these duties are, I lost my place. Um, as their duties are responsible for active shooter training and response, student education on law enforcement, mental health, and drugs and alcohol, that is way too much for what to place on one, uh, SRO. How can we expect students to talk to police if they're already, if there is already distrust and that they have brought amongst the community? Mental health is a full-time job and requires a mental health professional, not more policing. Initially, there was an effort to dress the officers down, look less intimidating, but I was struck down. Even when considering what the community is saying, the councils declined that relation, decided that their relationship with police were more important than the community that they're meant to serve. I urge you to say no to SROs. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthu?
Um, hello, everyone. Um, hello to, uh, Counselor, uh, Tipman, uh, Duggar, Hariyama, uh, Kimmy, Beatty, Hartmeier Prigg, Hassan, and Counselor, uh, Teeter, as well as Chief, uh, Stacy Jepson. Um, my name is Arthu. I am also a field organizer at Apano. Uh, like Thien said, we're a culturally specific organization that unites Asians and Pacific Islanders to build power, develop leaders. He, he mentioned this earlier. Uh, I'm deeply concerned about the proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city and school district regarding police in schools. Students in our community have expressed a desire to limit police interaction with schools. Almost thirty percent of students do not feel safer with an officer in schools. Uh, as a student at Portland State, Portland State University, I'm also intimate, intimately familiar with the shooting of Jason Washington. Uh, a case where PSU SRO showed up to a fight and immediately fired and hit Jason Washington seventeen times. Um, despite the fact that he was breaking up a fight, they immediately shot and killed him. Student resource officers have shown time and time and again to do nothing to keep students safe, even in scenarios when they were specifically there to prevent, um, prevent violence. In the cases of DeShaney versus Winnebago and the town of Castle Rock versus Gonzalez, our federal Supreme Court has even ruled that police have no obligation to protect us, much less our students. In the case of Jason Washington, as well as many others, SROs have been shown to put us in more danger than if they were absent. By voting no on this authorization, you will not be stopping the implementation of the Y S O program. A no vote allows you to demand a specific, clear, and informed IGA. The IGA that the city paid for by paying for the Sea Change Report. Please set up your Y S Os and students for access. Thank you. Success.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to, uh, council new items. Any councilors have items tonight? How about staff? Okay. All right, uh, we are on to, um, we're going to take the consent agenda, uh, council president, but we are pulling, um,
Two, three, one, two, seven?
Yes, thank you, uh, for our presentation.
Okay, um, I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed in the agenda. However, we'll remove agenda item two, three, one, two, seven for further discussion. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion this evening? All right, seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hassan. Counselor Hassan.
I think we lost her. She needs help getting back in.
Okay. Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion is adopted seven, zero.
Okay, uh, we're gonna have agenda bill two, three, one, two, seven. Um, I asked the city manager to pull this from consent. Uh, so the council can hear from our police chief and city manager. Uh, around the concerns being raised from the council about, uh. The sea change report and what was missing and hopefully give us a better understanding of. What the I G, I G A entails, what it's for, and is there another agreement to address some of the stuff that is the concern of the council? So. With that, I will hand it over to the city manager.
All right. Well, thank you, mayor. Um, before you this evening, as the mayor said, is an intergovernmental agreement that is between the city of Beaverton and the Beaverton School District. So as you know, the district and the city jointly commissioned a review of the existing school resource officer. Um, which was overseen by the district and completed in July of twenty twenty-two. Uh, by sea change. Uh, the district later presented, um, a report. It was called the B S. Um, D review and response report regarding the sea change recommendations in December of twenty twenty-two at a public workshop. Um, and I believe council received a copy of this report. Uh, the district in the report outlined its desired approach, including very specific sea change recommendations that they agreed, um, with. Uh, and their path forward, and this was around mental health and police response, school discipline, training, communication, data collection. Um, as well as, um, other metrics which guided the development of the I G A. So the updated I G A does two things, and in, in a sense, it is a service agreement. And it responds, one, to services that were requested by the district. And two, it conveys how those services will be provided by the police department. Um, so the district has engaged us. They want to continue the partnership with the S R O. And we are providing a mechanism to do that in addition to school policy procedures and protocols that they are also. Developing on their own that reflects some of the changes, um, that are recommended in the sea change report. Uh, the key service changes that you're gonna hear from Chief Jackson, um, on police. Involve the transition from the. Model away from the traditional S R O program, and we'll talk about what those changes actually look like. The new limited role and scope of law enforcement that indeed has substantive change. Um, safety changes in terms of, uh, service response levels. Data collection requirements and frequencies, and then expanded training, um, not only what they're currently, currently doing right now. But what are the additional programmatic changes that they need to do? And so I just wanted to take a moment just to set the table as we go into a presentation by Chief Jackson. So I'd like to turn it over to her to conduct that presentation. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, counsel. Good evening, mayor. Um, Kathy, could you show the screen? Show the screen? I'm just gonna presume you guys can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as the city manager indicated, I'm here tonight to kind of share with you a few, um, high level I D. Excuse me, high level, um, points related to this I G A. Keeping in mind, again, this is a service agreement. Um, and we are the service provider to this, uh, Beaverton School District. Um, next slide, please. Um, Captain Ed, uh, Master Polito is also here with me, and while I'm gonna be going through the slides and giving this presentation. At the end, I'm presuming you're gonna have some questions. I thought it was very important that, uh, he be here tonight to answer any kind of, uh, expert level questions at the ground level. And so he's here with me to do that. Uh, next slide, please, Kathy. Just a quick overview, um, I'll touch on the I G A, kind of what the purpose, uh, of the I G A is, what the recent changes, uh, have been. You know, our ongoing commitment with the school district and, um, the next steps. And again, the I G A, next slide, I'm sorry. Again, the I G A is a contractual partnership between B S D and the city of Beaverton. This agreement in particular was originally set out to be a four-year agreement. It is now a two-year agreement. Um, it creates a framework for the services that we will provide for B S D and the necessary legal recitals. And, uh, it's, it's meant to work closely with the B S D leadership to incorporate several changes drawn from the sea change report. Next slide, please. So one of the key changes is, um, beginning of this last school year, we moved away from. Referencing our program as the school resource officer program and moved it into, as C change has called out. A more contemporary model of youth services officer program. What this is and what the contrast and delineation is, is this really is a specialized team that has a year-round approach. Um, it has a more programmatic, uh, methodology, if you will. And it's, uh, it gives us the ability to dedicate training and a skill set to this group of officers. That serve the school district and the youth of the Beaverton community. Um, it has a more engagement approach versus a traditional responsive approach. Next slide, please. Some of those more clearly defined roles that you'll see called out in the I G A that is in line with the C change report. Bears out the things that we will, will be responding to and the things that we won't be responding to. The things that are. Something we will not engage in. I'll go over those, and then it talks about more, uh. Specific things related to how we go about selecting our youth services officers in the future. And the kind of trainings that we're going to be requiring of those officers as they enter into the role of a youth services officer program. Um, we'll also talk about data collection and reporting, and then talk about the uniforms. So as you can see, some of the, the big box things that we obviously would respond to as an active shooter threat. Um, the intimacy that we gain of having our youth service officers embedded in the school district, their knowledge of the schools themselves and the administration and the protocols. Is key if we were to ever have such an event in our school district. Um, they would respond to, to items of extreme violence. And, uh, to collect substances, uh, legal substances and dispose of them accordingly. Uh, we act as a consultant for the school district and the administration and staff. Oftentimes that is done. Uh, over the phone, but it, it also does occur in person. And then, you know. What this I G A will spell out and does alongside B S D and their report and policy changes. Is setting very clear boundaries, which was something highlighted specifically in the C change report around disciplinary issues. And the fact that the Beaverton Police Department should have no role. And disciplinary matters for students in the school district. Um, the other thing that this calls out is in the I G A, it specifies that we will have no interface with any immigration's issues. This is actually part of our policy. It's part of state law. And that the Beaverton Youth Services Officers in the schools have no connection to immigration or ICE and don't do any form of enforcement as such. Uh, the, the training and selection, uh, is just to incorporate a more holistic approach to how we select our youth services officers. To include folks from the school district and other elements of our community. Um, data collection and reporting, and I'll touch on that a little bit, uh, further on in this presentation. And then the uniforms, as I touched on earlier, is, uh, another subject I'll talk about, uh, in, in the next slides. Kathy, next slide, please. I listed here just for you guys to look at some of the youth services trainings. That we embedded in the I G A. Um, the basic youth services school is a required school that all youth services officers have to attend. These additional trainings are best practices, and many of which are called out by Nazaro. As well as, as been mentioned in the sea change reports. Next slide, please. Our ongoing commitment is to continue to work with the Beaverton School District, uh, Public Safety Division. To, uh, have a better partnership with them and to make sure that we have clearly defined roles. Uh, to develop, dealt, development of youth engagement program, which is what I'm gonna talk about related to the programmatic approach. And transparency, which is something that is key in what. I've read many times throughout the sea change report and even heard tonight in some of the testimony. I am, uh, actively trying to move to a model where we actually have statistical data on our. Live, uh, Beaverton Police Department dashboard, not dissimilar to what you currently see, but that actually would incorporate. The statistical, uh, data that's called out within the I G A that would be transparent. Uh, lifetime. Uh, education and marketing of our mission. One of the other things that came out loud and clear in the sea change report is. A lot of folks commented on they weren't quite sure what the role of the youth services officers. Is and what they do in the schools, and so part of that is us doing a better job of getting in front. Of the students and the staff and letting them know what our role is and what our role is not. Um, you know, I continue to have and, and, and have fostered a very strong relationship. With Dr. Baldarris at the Beaverton School District. And I think that that is a key component of moving forward. I put in here failing forward because I do think, um, you know. We are in an industry where we make mistakes. There's no two ways about it, and I think it's important for us. When we do make mistakes, to be transparent and own those mistakes. And learn from them. And so it's important to have dialogue when we do that. And in order to have that dialogue, we have to come to the table and actually have hard conversations, and I'm committed to doing that. Um, and then the annual comprehensive report, which is actually being polished up right now as we speak. For this last school year, we'll go to the council and the Beaverton School Board. Um, it's a comprehensive review of what things have occurred in the school over the last school year. Next slide, please. So the next steps would be to enhance our communication, public safety updates, fat sheets. Highlights from our program, and that again touches on the dashboard concept I just spoke of. Uh, the development and implementation of data collection, reporting, and continuous improvement. Again, along those same lines of failing forward, making sure that we're our own biggest critics, that we learn and that we're transparent in that. Uh, next slide, Kathy. And then again, finishing up our next, our short-term next steps would be to finalize that annual report I just referred to and deliver it to council and the school board. Uh, coordinate with B S D regarding new school protocols and procedures related to the youth services program. And then moving more midterm is the de- development of the twenty-three, twenty-four school marketing engagement plan. Providing a future informational update to council about stats of the youth services program. And continue to engage in applicable youth services training per the I G A terms. Um, long-term is the development of several summer programs. Um, you know, we serve nineteen thousand students in this, in the Beaverton School District. And they're only in school for a certain portion of the year. So in the summer months, it's, it's our goal to get involved in more programmatic things and developing those programs in the summer months. For engagement with our students and the youth during those summer months to develop key and crucial relationships. Um, obviously evaluating the program metrics for effectiveness and then partnering with the school to assess new training opportunities. And or approaches. Next slide, please. All right. And now I'm ready for questions, if you have any.
Oh, there's questions. Uh, thank you, uh, for your presentation. We'll go ahead and start with the council president.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, city manager, for, um, giving us the opportunity to talk about this and ask some questions. Um. We sent a lot of questions in advance, and I do think there is some clarity gained from that, but. One thing I observe as I look through the I G A is I see a lot of shells, but not a lot of shall nots. And so one of the things I'm trying to really understand is. Um, while there is some clarity around like on the, um, I think it's the fifth slide, the more clearly defined role slide with the boxes. It does, it does feel like it outlines to me what our S R O's role is in those things. Um, but chief, you mentioned some things that. Our role, the S R O will not be involved in, and I'm not really seeing that enumerated. And so one of my questions is, do we have like a follow-up amendment? Is there an M O U? Is there something where there would be further clarifications around? The role of the S R Os in schools. Um, my, my motivation for the question is how do we hold ourselves accountable to the thing? If it's not written down in the agreement that we have with one another? And I do have more about, I'm gonna start there.
So I think what you're asking is specifically a clearly defined parameter of when we would not be engaging in a situation. And that would be any kind of disciplinary, uh, issue. I am gonna punt this question to Captain Master Pluto because. This is in line with the student code of conduct and the eight elements of the student code of conduct. And so he can speak to that, and I'm gonna let him do that.
Thanks, chief, council mayor, and see you tonight. Uh, so if you look at the B S D website, this P B P D and the school district have come up with. Areas of the student code of conduct that. Would warrant, uh, contact with B P D police and then areas that would not. Identified in the student code of conduct for code three assaults, code five bullying, harassment, hazing. Code eight, dangerous drugs distributing, sharing or selling. Code twenty-four, sexual harassment in the case of a sexual assault. Code thirty-three, weapon offenses other than a firearm, knives, and explosive devices. Uh, code thirty-four weapons, particularly firearms. Code thirty-six, weapons, knives, and look-alike knives. Code thirty-seven, weapons, look-alike, look-alike explosive devices, firearms, or dangerous deadly weapons. Any violations of those codes on the student code of conduct would warrant a response or contact with B P D. Any other code in the student code of conduct is strictly dealt with by the school, and the officers have no involvement in that whatsoever. That's, that's the guideline, the kind of the litmus test of when we would get.
Okay, thank you. I think the one that's kind of missing for me from the list of. The shells and then that, that list that you just gave and. Uh, I don't have that in front of me to, to double check myself, so please let me know is, is regarding like mental health, or even we heard from someone today. About, um, you know, her, her child who has autism and, you know, so I'm just kind of curious, like. When it comes to matters like that, like what it, what are we saying that involvement looks like?
Sure, well, every school, most of the schools have counselors and psychologists. All of the Y S Os. Up until including the sergeant have all been to crisis intervention training, so they do have broader base knowledge than your normal patrol officer would. Uh, that and their experience this past week, they were out of Champions Park where with the sped classes doing their field day. So they're interacting with the students that have special needs to just expand their experiences in dealing with these kids. Um, while there may be a mental health component. Uh, that is associated with an assault or one of these other codes. Um, that's when they would revert back to one of their C I T training and then allowing. Or welcoming in the psychologist or the school staff to take point, understanding nuances of the student better than they would. So that's really dealt more on a case-by-case basis. Uh, and I'm also joined here by Lieutenant Kingsbury and Stars of yours, so you see me looking, they're both here.
Okay, yeah, thank you all for being.
Counselor, can I take a stab at, at kind of claiming this up just a little bit as to what the captain was saying is. Uh, that the response that we're gonna provide is, is strictly attached to those behaviors. Um, the, the condition or the state of, of the student at the time, maybe it due to a mental health crisis. But our involvement would be predicated based on the behavior attached. And then to the captain's point, if we're drawn into a situation that falls into that code of conduct. Um, we are C I T trained, but it, that's gonna be a, a sliding scale of. Of a lot of different variables in the moment on what our level of involvement is. But it would still have to be born out of that behavior. So if someone's having a mental health crisis and they're assaulting a teacher. Um, and hurting or harming another student. You know, we're gonna get, we're gonna get called to that for, for a variety of obvious reasons. Um. How to de-escalate that and the best tools to try to get that moment to be as calm as it can be. Will be employed through their training and then the other resources the school district has at their disposal in that situation. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it definitely helps. Um, I think my follow-up is kind of around then. Um, the, maybe the, the training and the district policy, and so especially knowing that you've been working with the school district on this. Um. I'm trying to understand some of the assurances of like. Just like knowing our roles, right? And I, I guess for me, I, I'm seeing things that are left out of this that are making it. it unclear for me that like, would, would the school always know when to call or when not to call, or if the school called, like, does the SRO ever say that's not an appropriate call for me to respond to, right? Like, can you help me kind of understand how that works?
All the time. And if, if you look at the IGA as that service contract, it's like, these are the things that they're asking of us. And then they have their own governing SOPs and policies that relate to how they handle the situation from the school district side. And so the IGA is crafted in mind with what service we're going to be providing. And so if you look within the IGA, and I don't have it actually directly in front of me, counselor, um, but there is, I believe, reference to their policies and their code of conduct in, uh, born within the IGA. And so that's a part of the governing piece that attaches to the IGA, but you don't typically find all the content of that within an intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, and then this will be my last one. And thank you, uh, all of you for answering my questions. Um, in terms of the reporting, we didn't really define in here what that reporting looks like. Is there additional work that will be going on to define like what will be reported, how often and things like that?
Yes, and actually there is some specificity within the IGA that talks about what we are required to report on, uh, to include some work related to who calls, who's the origin of the call, whether it's a student, the school district, a parent, or if it's initiated by a police officer. Those are all metrics that we will have to define annually under this agreement. And in doing so, we have to work collaboratively, collaboratively with the Washington County Sheriff's Office and the Hillsborough Police Department because the Beaverton School District isn't just our program. It's, um, the Washington County Sheriff's Office has four deputies assigned to, to schools within BSD and Hillsborough has, so we have to be on the same page and we have to work with WACA to create coding and CAD information to be able to do that. And that's in the process of, of happening right now for us to be able to do that. In addition to that, we will be doing our own reporting. So when I talk about the dashboard, it'll provide the re, the, the responses that were calls for service is a clean example. Uh, this past school year, we, we serviced over two thousand calls for service within Beaverton School District specifically by our, uh, youth service officers. So give those statistics, how many arrests we made, how many referrals we made. All of that kind of information will, will live live on the dashboard. That's going to take a little bit of time. When I say that, I mean thirty to sixty days for, for me to get that in place before the next school year starts and to be able to, to go live with that.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Hassan, and I think it was Counselor Z Three that's with you there. So you're both up right now.
Uh, hello, I'm having mass wifi issues, so hopefully I don't cut out again. I'm on like two devices at this point and I've got quite a few questions. I hope you're ready.
Oh.
Yeah, I know you mentioned, uh, training. Is that required training or is it recommended training?
So the required training is the basic NASRO, uh, youth services, or they still call it SRO, um, training. The, the additional training is recommended. However, I will say there's a commitment between us and the school district to try to pick off as many of those as we can. And I'll let the captain speak to that here in a second, how many they already have picked off. Um, but what that list is that you saw and what is embedded in the IGA is what I basically crafted around sea change recommendations and just what is, is best practice, quite honestly, and in line with this youth services model of trying to create, um, experts in that industry of youth services. So as you know, um, there's a lot of nuances that go into working with youth. And those nuances expand, not just in the everyday interactions with youth, but also on the legal fronts, what we can do, what we can't do, who we can interview, ages and when we can interview. Those things are very nuanced. And so these officers are going to be specialized in that arena. And so this training lines them up to do that, not to mention just some of the better training around de-escalation, DEI. Um, you saw the list. It's an incredibly healthy list and I will let, uh, the captain tell you, uh, to date how much training they have.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, so we finally, some of this had to do with COVID catching up, but as of today, all of our youth service officers have been through the basic SRO course offered by NASRO. Uh, half of them have been through the advanced SRO course. They've all been to the Applied Suicide Intervention Skilled Training, or known as ASSIST. They've all been to Crisis Intervention Training, which is a advanced behavioral health training provided by Washington County Mental Health Services. They've been to the Ozroa Oregon School Resource Officer Association School Safety Conference. They've been through active threat training. Uh, some have attended the gang and human trafficking, uh, conference for SROs. Some have been to the Idaho Threat Assessment Conference, uh, Student Threat Assessment Team Training they've been to this year. Some have been to the briefings, um, that was been put on through the I Love You Guys Foundation, which is the parents of some of the Columbine, uh, students, so from Colorado. They've been through diversity, equity and inclusion training, the winter briefings and the Oregon Child Forensics Interview Training. Um, I have started the Beers up here. He's been to the advanced NASRO.
No, I haven't been to this.
But he can speak to some nuances if you want more about what's.
No, it's okay. Uh, that's okay. So for the crisis intervention training, I'd written that one down. Um, like, is that for children though, or is that just on general crisis? Like, what are the children specific or working with kids or working with kids, like that's, that population that, that's kind of brought, been brought up? Like, what are those trainings?
I can take that one for it. So the crisis intervention training, uh, that we get through Washington County Mental Health is a, it's forty-hour class and that it encompasses, um, all levels of mental health stuff. So that does incorporate some youth stuff, but it also incorporates, uh, adults as well as we go through it. A lot of the, um, youth-related stuff, the children-related stuff is the Oregon, uh, child forensics interviewing. Uh, so that talks about that. That's where you learn more about how you work with kids, how you talk with kids, how you provide those opportunities to slow things down, uh, along with, uh, giving them an opportunity to explain and take your time with it. Um, some of the other stuff that's covered with this, in this mental health stuff is NASRO covers it in their basic course. They also cover it in their advanced course. Um, they cover it in their national, uh, conference and then they also covered it in the supervisor course as well, um, that NASRO does. Ozroa also covers it, uh, sometimes depending on who they have for guest speakers as well. Um, and then we also have a small portion of that with some of the, uh, mental health training that we get here through the police department as well.
Okay, so I mean, just going to throw this out there, like my gut is saying like not anything super youth-centric or focused, or maybe working with special populations, but we'll, I'll let that one, um, sit for a bit. Um, talk to me about, um, sorry, this one's for you, chief. Uh, so let's say that the YSO program like didn't exist, for example, um, and there was no, um, this program. Would patrol officers respond to schools in the event of a call for service?
Oh, of course, yes.
Okay, I, and I just, there were some people that were asking that question, so I wanted to make sure we said that. If there isn't a YSO present because they're dealing with a call for service, what's the, the protocol for that?
Meaning today, like if a, a YSO is tied up on a call?
Hmm.
There, there's a cover. So like, you know, I have six YSOs, so if there's other calls, they, they can move between the schools and handle those calls. Um, if it's a, a large involved call, our patrol officers do augment and respond to the schools. Um, I hope that answers your question.
It does. You said six officers, so is this at the six high schools?
No, we have four, four high schools that currently sit within the, you know, our jurisdiction. But yes, there, there are youth services officers in every one of the high schools in the Beaverton School District.
Can you remind me which four are Beaverton?
Yeah, we have Mountainside, Beaverton High School, Southbridge and Sunset. We also augment the community school. An act.
Okay, and Sunset, Sunset is in Beaverton? School, okay. Uh, regarding the uniforms, is the BPD open to considering the dressing down requests that we've heard from folks?
Yeah, I'm open to that. I, I know this has been a, a point of, of discussion many times. Uh, what I have said and what I, what I shared with the Beaverton School Board is that, um, our youth services officers aren't just used, I mean, they're not just in the schools. Um, they, they do respond to calls outside of the schools and they are GPS dispatched quite often to any kind of high-profile call within the jurisdictional area that they're situated in, in the school. And it's, it is imperative that they have the necessary, necessary tools at their disposal to be functional in all those different environments. Um, having said that, we have tested some alternative uniforms, if you will, this past year. And, you know, we still are open to those further discussions. What becomes difficult from a risk standpoint is the amount of pieces of equipment that we require our officers to carry now and they need to carry now, like tourniquets and Narcan and just the litany of, of instruments that they have to carry. Um, it, it is these load-bearing vests that you see that I think are a lot of the point of contention is, is very rooted in the training that they receive. And so if our officers carry this gear and it's, i- if they know where that's at on their, on their, uh, load-bearing vests and they go through training, that's a muscle memory issue, there's a whole slew of things I can unpack there. Um, but I'm not saying that we're not open to having deeper conversations surrounding this and finding, uh, a good balance.
Okay, cause I, what I've heard, and I'd have to check, that the Hillsborough PD has done something with theirs, but I don't know enough about it. You might?
I do. Um, and they have somewhat stepped back from that, uh, because of some of these issues I'm addressing as well as what you do see is in environments where they're doing teaching or classroom stuff, or they're in a programmatic mode, um, yes, they dress down for those. Um, but just the day-to-day, it's, it's a traditional uniform.
Okay. Um, one thing that really did, um, kind of call out to me and council president brought it up, and so I want to kind of elevate it for a second, like, and it was, council president's comment was more around like holding ourselves accountable to this agreement and, and making sure there's some clarity on lanes. The Sea Change Report specifically recommend that the response to calls for service are limited to extreme violence and not to be used for, for minor fights, but it feels like this proposed IGA kind of leaves that a little open-ended. Can we be more limited on that? Like, I, I genuinely believe that putting our police in schools to, to deal with things that might not be police-worthy, it, it gives me great anxiety.
I, I, and I understand that. Um, I think we put this on the school district. I mean, they're the ones that call for our service. So if they're, i- if they're in a situation where that's unfolding and, and I'll touch on the extreme violence here in a minute, um, and they call our officers to that scene and, and that's why they're going through such extensive training right now, is that we're the service provider. They dictate when and, and how we show up, so to speak. The other piece of that is the term extreme violence is incredibly subjective. And it also can turn, turn on a, a moment's notice. So something that seems fairly innocuous to begin with can turn into extreme violence very quickly. And so you're asking, um, folks to try to delineate that and you're going to get such a wide gamut of opinions and discernment around that term in and of itself.
I hear you. I would just argue that it sounds like there is a, a, uh, like we're using the code of conduct, right, from the school district and that in itself is subjective, right? So we're having subjectivity of leaders in buildings to decide what is and what isn't. And then there's some level of subjectivity here and it just gives me great, like, like, can we be more defined? What, like, well, let me just say that. We, I think we should be more defined because it protects us, but it also protects the schools when we're being the service provider, like we, I don't want us to be set up for, for failure. So I'm just going to like, say, like, I, I'd really, you know, like for counselors, like that's something that's important to me is more of a framework around identifying, like, the limits of the involvement so that there's clarity because there is a ton of ambiguity that comes not just from the teacher or the administrator. I know there's other questions. I'm so sorry, I have two more and then I'll stop.
Can I, before you go to your next one, I, I think it's, let's just pause there for a second because it's an important question. Is our city attorney available to answer part of Counselor Hassan's question? Because do we have the legal right to say we're only responding in these situations if we're called? And so I think we need a legal interpretation for Counselor Hassan's question before we move on, sorry.
Let's make sure. A call for service is put in and the agency decides that it's not going to respond to that call for service? Is that basically what we're talking about?
Uh, I think it's the IGA limiting, the IGA specifically stating that there are specific cases where we would be called rather than leaving it open-ended for any calls.
Well, my, my answer is going to be the legal answer. There's a policy question that the chief's going to want. I think that you can do that.
Okay. Does that help, Mayor? Do you have a follow-up or?
Yeah, uh, cause I do think it's an important annotation to the question between what is our policy and legal right to do? And if we are, um, going to say we're only responding in this instance, what is the mechanism for enforcement if they call beyond that? So we say we're only going to respond here and then they, the, the call comes from the school. How do we respond if, if we have an IGA in place that says we're not? Are we legally allowed to say we're not sending officers even though they called?
Again, from the legal standpoint, yes, you could do that. I think the police chief is going to say that's not very good service. But from a legal standpoint, yes, I think you can say, I'm sorry, we're not going to recall, respond to these calls.
But we're technically doing that already. Like, we're not, right? Like, we're saying we're only going to respond to certain ones and I think all I'm saying is to, to make sure it's more clearly defined and potentially limited. Correct? Okay. Um, the data collection request, and I'll just say like this is a, a big one for me. Um, the, the report recommended, uh, disaggregating the information by race, ethnicity, by disorderly conduct, by specific charges. Um, can we make sure that we're collecting that data? And can we, the Sea Change Report specifically asked for monthly reports. Um, putting on my teacher hat, you can log a lot of stuff in synergy and the IGA talked about the officer's access to synergy. So if we're using that mechanism, can we get monthly reporting and can that be included in the IGA language?
The IG does include that language. It doesn't include it on a monthly basis. It includes it on a semester basis, but it does call out exactly what you just said. It calls out the types of, uh, crimes or events that we're responding to, the ethnicity breakdown, all those things are called out in the IGA itself.
Okay, the, well, the IGA says number and type of incidents, arrest, referral or investigation. I don't believe it says race, ethnicity, gender, and somebody like phone a friend I can pull it up too.
Well, okay, and if it doesn't, I apologize, but it will include that. Absolutely.
Um, the last one, and I'm so sorry, but thank you, Counselors. For those of you who don't know, I used to teach high school in Beaverton. So like I've got, this is, you know, I have a lot of folks have been reaching out about this issue. Um, the home base, the Sea Change Report recommended that police did not have desk space at schools, um, except for a follow-up. And it sounds like the IGA says otherwise. Can you help us understand why we went against the recommendation of the consultant?
That's, that's the Beaverton School District's decision to do that. They've requested that we be in their schools, that we hold office space in their schools. And quite honestly, I support that a hundred percent because I believe that if we are just nothing more than a response mechanism within the schools, then we're not gaining any ground in how we're really being, building relationships within the schools. And to me, that's critical. A huge component of, of what the service is, is developing positive relationships within the schools. And if we're not allowed to be in that space to try to develop those relationships and we're only there in the school when something bad happens, then that further divides the situation, in my opinion.
Okay, uh, I mean, I hear what you're saying. Like, when I read the C Change Report, there is a desire to limit it to specific situations and I, like, in my heart, go with that recommendation because as one of the constituents reached out said, when there is police presence with children, it tends to increase negative outcomes. Like, I don't, I'm not saying that that's neither here nor there. It just, I think it's a difference of opinion. Um, I want to be thoughtful that there are other counselors with questions. I will say that the way this IGA is today, like, I'd love to move for us to review this later and/or consider giving feedback to make it maybe a little bit closer to what we want, but I'm gonna let other folks speak so that, um, we can hear your perspective. Thanks.
So not a, not a specific motion, Counselor?
I can.
Well, I, you said I move, so I just wanna make sure, like, if we can motion, I wanna acknowledge it. If you're, if you want us to continue, we can continue and you can bring a motion later.
Y'all want me to make a motion? I'm gonna make a motion to, um, review this.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it might be important to hear from everyone else. Can you? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, let's just hear from everyone else before we decide on a motion.
Right, Counselor Duggar.
Thank you. I, I'm gonna start. I have a, a few easier questions, I think, or simpler questions, but I just wanna start by saying I'm frustrated that this council's leading this discussion when it should be the Beaverton School District. Uh, I did not run for Beaverton School District. I do not have the expertise of a school, uh, someone who focuses on schools. So you know, I, I, I feel like I'm being pulled in all these different directions and I don't have the expertise to really be as present in, in, uh, and I also feel like if the Beaverton School District were trying to uh, define policy for the city, I would be pretty upset because that is my lane and I feel like I'm very much in their lane. So having said that, I have some questions. Uh, does the BPD only work in schools located within the Beaverton city limits? Is that correct?
In our jurisdiction, yes.
Okay, how does this IGA differ from the other agencies? So the IGA between Washington County, uh, Sheriff's Office and the school district and the City of Hillsborough Police and the school district?
It shouldn't differ at all and I don't have either of those documents in front of me. I'm very sorry, but it, the, in essence, they should contractually have a similar, if not identical framework.
So what would happen if we had a different IGA than those other jurisdictions? How is this gonna be implemented? Is it just schools within Beaverton? That would, that would only have officers from BPD and they would have a very different experience than students in the Beaverton School District outside of the city of Beaverton? Is that what we're, is that how that would operationally work?
Yeah, each city or county governs their own IGAs, uh, through that relationship with the Beaverton School District. So there are, you know, there are nuances to each of them that are a little different, but the overarching framework of it in terms of some of the recitals should be pretty similar. I will say that because, um, we partnered with the Beaverton School District to uh, bring in C Change and there is a desire for us to codify that, if you will. Um, what those changes will be, those are embedded within our IGA.
I heard you mention, I think it was you, Chief, but it might've been, uh, the captain, that we represent nineteen thousand students. Is that correct? So that's less than half the school district population. Is that?
Roughly.
I think they're around roughly forty-two, forty-three thousand.
Yes.
So why are we staffing seven officers and Washington County doing four? And, uh, Hillsborough doing one if more than half of students reside outside of the city limits of Beaverton? How did this come about?
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Uh, so currently there's thirty-eight thousand six hundred students in BSD, uh, so we have just about half.
Okay.
We have the high schools. So while there's about nineteen thousand between Beaverton, Washington County and the one school at Hillsborough that does watch, Beaverton has the older children, um, while County has a lot more of the elementary schools. So the draw is, is more on our end than on the county. County has two high schools and a lot of elementary schools.
So it's more of a, an age thing than rather a, a raw number of students?
Right. The calls for service between the middle schools and the high schools are greater than just say Greenway Elementary and the, and the other elementary schools.
Cool, thank you. Have other agencies, so has Hillsborough and Washington County initiated C Change recommendations?
Both Washington County and Hillsborough were, were involved in the C Change, um, review. Uh, we sat in with Washington County YSO, SROs during the review process.
Do we know if, if those changes, uh, go beyond what, or is in the scope of ours, our IGA?
I believe the school district is in similar conversations with, uh, Washington County. We meet regularly with them as an entire team. So Beaverton Public Safety, BPD, uh, HPD and the Sheriff's Office meet once a week to make sure we're all on the same page collectively. Hillsborough has so much, Hillsborough has one school base up on, uh, one eighty-fifth, so their tons of Beaverton School District is minimal. Most of it's the county and other.
And there is one, so one of the, uh, Washington County SROs, uh, he covers the unincorporated schools in Hillsborough School District. So there are only three that are actually signed inside Beaverton School District.
Sure. Um, genuinely concerned about our neurodivergent students, um, and how we interact with them. Uh, can we talk about training specific to those individuals? Uh, we've heard from a, I, I, I think Council President or Counselor Hudson brought it up, a very passionate mother um, that's had a really bad situation. Can we talk about how we're gonna prevent that from happening going forward?
Well, I'll talk about that, that situation. So that situation, the YSO wasn't involved with the student at all. That was, the YSO was at the school when an incident happened where, incident happened where a staff member was assaulted. The YSO was consulted as part of the school district's, uh, student threat assessment process. As part of that, based on the behaviors of that student, the officer wrote a report, which is what the officer should have done in those circumstances based on that specific behavior. That, that report got sent out to the Washington County Juvenile Department. Washington County Juvenile Department wants all reports involving every single juvenile, every time you write a report. We're not doing that because it, it's, it, it doesn't make sense to be sending every time we write a report about a juvenile or a juvenile involvement when there's nobody that wants anybody pursue charges. And let's say a parent just wants something documented in case it happens again. So in, so there's a little difference of opinion in what, what Washington County wants and what we want and what we do.
But in speaking to, you know, the, the training component of this, um, you know, there's, we've identified opportunities for ongoing training to have the YSOs kind of be on the police, at least on the police side, the subject matter expert in dealing with kids that are under the sped umbrella, uh, the special education. And some of that has to do with exposure, like I, I mentioned earlier. A week or so ago, we were out at Champions Park on the hundred seventieth when the sped classes got together for their field day. Um, and that's having our officers interact with, with kids with disabilities. Um, looking at on the call for service, like Counselor Hassan's question, if, if the YSO is not there, the call will be serviced by patrol, but patrol doesn't have the lived experience of dealing with these children um, by being in the schools and understanding the nuances that go with dealing with a kid with special needs. Why is the YSO, at least through exposure and ongoing training, will be better adapt to understand, uh, the de-escalation text and the explain to kids this regulated? And, and how to judge that balance when the school needs to kind of take over and we need to remove ourselves from the situation in dealing with these kids. So there's more to be learned for us to do, uh, we're looking forward to training opportunities in the future.
And that's a really high priority for me is making, finding training specific to those students. Uh, because it is, it is, you know, I have family members, I have friends that are in that community. It is incredibly difficult, uh, already. So I think anytime we can um, increase our sensitivity to that, I would find, we, we can find resources to get that done. Like, it's just, it's a really high priority for me. So I, I hope we are able to do that. I think my other questions uh, around the uniform, I generally supportive of that. I think, uh, even the police, the, the bike, I live in downtown, the bike cops have a slightly different uniform that feels a little more approachable. Um, I, I think if we could work towards that, um, would be helpful. I'm really supportive of the dashboard, Chief, if, that, as soon as we can get that up, I think people, it's a very reasonable request to have data. Uh, and then just, you know, as clear as we can, if we could define extreme violence, even if it's not a perfect definition, like, like, that's just really vague for me and I'd really like some clarity there, but, uh, appreciate all the, the answers.
Thank you. And, um, I just wanna echo your, your statement about, um, the sensitivity around the training and handling of children that have special needs cuz I have a child like that. So I, I, I just want you to know that that touches, you know, me personally. So.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Kimmy?
Oh, thank you. I think most of my questions were answered by everyone. I just have a quick one. I wanna maybe ask the chief about as the Counselor Hassan has, uh, um, noted before that our C Change Report um, was gearing toward more like a, yeah, responsive, um, action rather than engagement. Uh, but you are a strong advocate for engagement. Uh, maybe I wanna hear more, uh, of your, um, thoughts on that, uh, cuz I think that could be a decision maker for me for the future. Um, uh, if we're gonna still fund this program or not when we're having a, uh, budget crisis. So maybe you can, uh, tell me and convince me somehow uh, that engagement that there is much better going forward when we deal with the schools.
Happy to. Thank you. Um, a big part of and, and I'll speak bluntly is the work that needs to be done in building bridges, if you will, is the hard work of us being in the same space and developing trust. And you can't do that without coming together and being engaged in that. And I don't prefer to have a police department that just simply responds to a crisis. I want to be able to address, um, the feelings of the BIPOC community, the feelings of the LGBTQ plus community within our schools and, and the fear that has been demonstrated in that report. And the only way I see a path to do that is to develop relationships through engagement and create positive interactions um, that drive a different feeling for those students when they show up to school. And the only way we do that is through that hard work. It's not by, um, us just being there in a hard moment. And so that's my feelings on it.
Okay, that's, that's it for my questions.
Counselor Tibnan?
Thank you. Um, well, I, I've crossed a lot of my questions out. The last, uh, bit here. Um, I only have two that I don't think we've touched on yet. And they're a little out of our bailiwick, but I think it would help inform both our thinking and, and for those that are tuning in as well is interactions that have happened on the, uh, the school side in this conversation. I don't follow the school board meetings. I don't know what the, um, attendance has been like at those or the conversations around the IGA. Um, but I am curious, um, if your involvement in, like, if, uh, folks that have been showing up to the school board meetings are asking these same, same types of questions of you or um, if the school board itself is asking the same types of questions, like, are you seeing the same concerns coming from both sides? The city and the, and the district? And I know that's a real qualitative, subjective question, but I'm, I'm curious what your thoughts are on that.
Um, well, on January ninth, I, um, accompanied, uh, Carl Mead, the Assistant Superintendent and several others uh, in front of the school board to do a presentation on the changes that have come or the recommended changes from C Change. Um, a lot of the questions that came from the school board, such as yourself, are similar. Um, and we were able to explain through kind of the methodology i- in those moments, but there was no, um, it was a private meeting, if you will. So it was just us providing a presentation. And I can't speak to any other school board meeting, uh, or any involvement at that level other than my time on January ninth.
Got it. Okay. I think the question was born out of something that Counselor Duggar had brought up, um, about how the, a lot of this feels like it's not our lane. It feels like it's the school board's lane and, and that the elected body and the superintendent with feedback from everybody and involved with schools. Um, but to that end, there, I think at the heart of this, like, what is on the city side of it, what what are the things that we can control for and weigh in on versus the school board? And one of the things I think is going to be absolutely critical to all of this actually working is not just the trainings that have been mentioned for the police department um, and for the YSOs in particular, but also training for teachers and staff on when to reach out to the YSOs and, um, and, and what it looks like for them to respond to all of the other calls that maybe traditionally they have been leaning, um, on the old SRO program for. So can you speak to that at all? Cuz I, I, that, that's where I'm, my concern. I, I, a lot of the answers that you've given tonight have addressed a lot of the concerns that I've had. That is one. Um, it's almost like being set up for failure if you, if you don't have that partnership doing the work on the other side as well. So, um, can, can you weigh in on that at all?
Yeah, I absolutely can. Some of the, one of the, the largest components of C Change Report does address exactly what you're speaking of is the training on the school districts and, and cleaning up and, and, and making it very clear what the responsibilities of the staff and administration are as it relates to pulling us in and involving us. We can always answer a phone call as a, a consult, which we do all the time, and they can bounce things off of this, but the school district, since, uh, Dr. Baldairis has got there, has implemented several changes as it relates to those boundaries and then the training that goes hand in hand with that. Now, I can't speak to all of what that looks like, but I do know that in, in the bulk of that presentation on January ninth, that was very clear to me. Listening to them present, that this is well underway to include ramping up mental health services and different programs that address some of the things that were specifically called out from C Change to BSD.
Mm-hmm.
You can see in the report, there's packages in the C Change Report. Package one was strictly recommendations to the school district. Package two was A and B to us, to the police department.
Mm-hmm.
For the city of Beaverton, if you will. So they have the work that they're doing on their end and, and under that direction of their new superintendent is well underway.
Got it. Okay, well, and, uh, just to, to cap that off and, and then I'll wrap, wrap up my part of this. And I mean the word C Change, not in relation to the consultant, but the actual term itself is that we have experienced that since the pandemic. We've got uh, numbers off the charts of kids that are in dire straits and experiencing mental health crisis and, and new and developing ways that we, I think, are experiencing. Um, probably the first time, I'm guessing, ever, um, in history of modern day schooling. And that, I don't think that's for the city of Beaverton to solve on its own or for, um, Beaverton Police to, to figure out, um, how to extract themselves so that they never have to interact with it. I, I, that seemed very complex. It's something that is, like you said, failing forward, learning as we go. But I mean, this is just a shout, shouting from, um, our meeting tonight, uh, in Beaverton, all the way to Salem and to, and even to the federal level, like, to, the, the schools are gonna need a lot of help to figure out how to fund appropriately to address this. And, um, knowing that Beaverton School District just went through quite a lot of, uh, belt tightening and cuts and stuff like that. I don't know how they're gonna make progress on that um, in the immediate future. And I don't know what progress looks like, um, funding wise or where it's coming from or what our role is in it. Um, but I, I think that that's on the minds of a lot of people that are tuning in, probably other counselors, um, as well. So I just wanted to throw that out there too, that I, I think So I just wanted to throw that out there too, that I I think we're we're trying to address one particular thing tonight, but there's a whole other. Part of it that I think all of us are um. Very, very uh concerned about. I just don't know what the city of Beaverton's role would be, if any, in in helping to address. That part of it, but I'm eager to to find out for sure what what that is, so. Um I'll stop with my stream of consciousness now and turn it back over to the mayor.
I was just coming in to save you from that and tell you that I think our role is limited, but not obsolete. Uh I think on the plus side with Republican senators go going back in, uh schools are being funded. At a all time high with the unexpected money uh the legislature is getting. Um and so I think there there's gonna be money pumping into the schools. Is it enough? No, it's never enough, but is it a lot more than what they have now? Yeah, and so school districts and the part of the governor's directive orders has been around mental health, and so. I think we have to give the school district some space to receive that money from the federal government. And implement it in the way that they see fit. Our school district, we our voters, me included, have passed bond after bond after bond because we want our schools funded, so. I I don't know much of a role from the mayor's standpoint beyond helping them pass bonds that we really can engage in their funding and mental health. Roles, so uh I'm I'm open to learning more, but I feel like we have an awful lot on our own plate. Um Counselor Teeter.
Yeah, thanks. I think I only have one remaining question that hasn't already been asked. Um and it's about the process. We we heard from some people giving testimony so far, uh feeling frustrated that they. Were not included as part of their review, and this is the first time we as city council are reviewing it. Um Jenny, this might be a question for you more about um. The process of how this came to us. Um I'm curious because for the community's information. When we review policy on city council level, a lot of times we've got one-on-one meetings with staff or a work session, and this felt like it was just. Um kind of thrown into consent, and given how hotly debated this issue's been over the past few years. I'm just curious about the process and how that feedback was received from the community or. Uh it's just kind of an open-ended question, open to the thought about it.
Um my comments to that would be that, and I think it's been spoken by a couple of counselors already, is that. Um much of this work is being driven by um the school district. Uh they have made a report, they've responded to C change recommendations, they've identified. Um the framework in which this IGA, which they have um wanted to continue to uh engage in in partnership, so this is a service agreement. This would not be something necessarily that would be routed to commissions unless the council. Um wanted that directed to the commissions, but would not necessarily be appropriate. We would be be getting out of our lane because this is. Being really shared um from the school district's perspective and what they want. I think um someone has said something very astute, which is what can we control for? And in this conversation, you can control for a few things. You can control for the way in which we engage in this um. Uh YSO kind of program. You can control the training to a certain extent. Uh because the the officers are under um the service delivery of the council, so if there's additional training that you would like. As a city, you certainly could do that. Um you can also engage in terms of being informed by the school about their process. They have to put in place. The school will make the call when we want to, we will respond to that call, right? They are in the driver's seat in terms of when they want us to come and what they want us to do. And we try to do our best to accommodate their requests through the IGA process, the development process. And the last thing I would say is that this council can make a decision whether they wanna be a service provider or not. And that would really be your decision, and that's why this IGA is before the council and not the commissions, so that.
Yeah, thank you. That that is helpful, and I I think part of that's where I'm struggling is just. Like what is our role as a service provider and a jurisdiction that's not our own um. And it's hard. I'm having a lot of I'm having a lot of trouble with this one. There are some some values of mine or priorities of mine. Um that other people have mentioned that I would like to see in a future IGA. Um I'm less concerned about how officers having office space in schools. Um I think our officers do really well with with responding to calls. And um I don't think this, my comments are not a critique of our officers themselves, but rather just. What is the best so- source of support for the students? Um and a lot of the roles and responsibilities that I'm seeing in the IGA are focused on mental health. Uh teaching and education, and those feel more appropriate for uh mental health professionals. I think that's really the root of why I'm struggling with this and. Um just like, is this the right fit? Um obviously, Beaverton School Board will have some thoughts tonight, but sure we'll hear later. Um but then the the other concern I've got is just is with the costs, and I know that we're in really hard budget time. Um so this is thirteen hundred dollars or thirteen, one point three million for the full fiscal year. The school district will be paying us two hundred thousand dollars for their portion, their twenty percent portion of the school year. And that'll go up in future years. Um but I would be uncomfortable having anything more than a one-year agreement. Um just because we don't know how what our budget's gonna be looking like next year. Um I would like to see more reporting if this if this IGA goes and into place. I would like to see the reporting and see the effects of it and. How it's working so that we can base our our next budgets or base our next budget budget decisions off of that. And so I do have a lot of concerns, but a lot of people have asked a lot of a lot of the questions I have already, so I appreciate the the answers we've gotten. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. I'm gonna uh start with my comments before we go for a second round. Um. I'll tell you, this is uh this is a struggle for me. Um I've been very open about my concerns with police in the schools for a long time, and that. Uh is derivative of my personal experience of being a school-based health center director and. Two counties and five school districts. I have intimate involvement with mental health services and engagement with officers. As well as homeless students providing their healthcare on campuses. Um a lot has changed for me since twenty twenty. A few things I wanna say at the top. We have a person of color leading a very diverse school district. Uh the incoming chair tonight is a woman of color. Uh we have um uh a a woman police chief. That has been engaging in the IG like the IGA process. And so I feel like we have the right people making the agreements that didn't exist in twenty twenty. And I'll tell you, as my first year as mayor, I compelled the last superintendent, our last police chief, we had an interim city manager. Into my office on multiple occasions to talk about my number one concern, which was the training on the school district side. Because our officers are responding to what the school district is asking. And what I feel is of still kind of missing in this IGA, and perhaps the way that we do it is not in the IGA, but perhaps in MOU. Is concrete training around the school district aspect of when they're calling, because we can set agreements around. Um when we're gonna respond, but I think it's gonna be hard if it goes through the nine-one-one call center that. Maybe our SROs, but if a patrol officer, how are we going to really implement that? That is my concern. We can say it. But I think if someone calls the police from a school district, it's routed through WACA, it goes out over the like, I don't see a path in which we can control that piece. Um and so I'm thinking about ways to move this IGA, but still have that piece concern addressed. And what I think would be really helpful is if once a quarter, we have school district employees, our SROs, review calls. And they go through like an af- after-action review on a quarterly basis of the calls that came in. So we can, from our perspective, say this wasn't an appropriate call. This is how we think we should respond to kind of create that built-in expectation. That we're a partner in this this training process. I think it would also help us identify schools or. Um principals that are maybe need extra training, like if we start getting a plethora of calls from one school. Maybe it's the school, maybe it's the officers, maybe it's we recognize there is something going on in that school that needs outside resources. That we can go to the county mental health services and say, look, we've isolated a school that's having X, Y, or Z go on. Perhaps it's fentanyl or something else. How what I want is interested is that piece. Can we can control a mechanism? Where we are reviewing calls together, not as like just the service provider, but as a partner. Because that has remained my number one concern, and I get it, it's partly in the IGA. It's just not strong enough for me. Is that something we could do or implement like separate from the IGA?
Mayor, I'm happy to to eh engage that conversation with the school district and do that. Uh that's not a lift for us to do a quarterly review of what you're asking, and I think it's it's probably. A wise uh litmus test, if you will, of. When and how and should it be happening the way it is? So that's an that's an easy thing for us to to carve out separately in an MOU.
All right, my second concern is around uh the uniforms too, and I hear you. I was a trained US Army medic that spent. Hours of my life training to grab X, Y, or Z off a molly vest to do things in a very particular order. The way that you're taught to fire firearms. Is all about muscle memory. If our concern is that these officers are going into call and they that that training is important. Should we have the conversation that's similar to the bike team, that these officers only do this work? Is that like a budget issue? Is that a a staffing issue? Because we've made this exception for our bike team, that they are they are the ones doing this work in the downtown core. If the C change report is calling for it, we think it's an appropriate use, and you agree minus this other aspect. What do we need to do to make sure that our youth service officers are that? Youth service officers, so they're not pulled to other directions. Is that even possible?
Well, the aesthetic difference that you're talking about, their bike officers, is really they're in shorts, they're in a polo shirt. But they still are wearing an LBV to carry all their gear. So I mean, if what we're talking about here is getting um our SROs into. Um a different color, a brighter color, or or however that looks, yeah, that that's something we we certainly can accomplish. Um it this comes down to the the practicality of access to their equipment. And so I do think that we can find creative ways to, as as we've said, soften the uniform.
What's the deadline that you're gonna tell us today that you can do that? By the start of the school year?
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh. God, now I lost my train of thought. There was one more. Um. Oh, I know what it is, training. I like the idea of incentivizing versus penalizing. Uh is there a way for us to create a financial incentive for our SROs to get this training? Like. If they hit a certain amount, they get a bonus. I know that other specialties get special pay. Is there a way for us to say like, we value this, we want the best of the best in our schools. This is what the school district is asking for us. And I think the best way or one of the tools that we can use from an elected body is incentivizing. It's gonna incentivize them to do the training on their off time, to move through it quicker. Um it it wouldn't be enough, but I do think it's meaningful if we're asking people to do things in a rapid succession. Is that a possibility for us to carve out funds to incentivize our officers to complete this training quicker?
Uh I can absolutely evaluate that, and I don't I don't disagree with you from a fundamental standpoint that if we're asking. Um and I'm going on record with this, so my labor body is probably gonna be listening to this. That if we're asking these officers to do this job and we're asking them to be specialized. It's not dissimilar to any of our other specialized teams that do get incentivized. So um I'm actually very supportive of that, but again, it comes down to dollars and cents and budget. And our shared um equation, if you will, with the school district, but I think it's it's wise money.
Well, I I recognize that you would have to negotiate that, and that would probably be a labor negotiation piece. I'm just saying that I like the idea of a carrot. I like the idea of incentivizing. I think uh it will make a difference in in the expedition uh expeditious way they complete the program and incentivize them to do more. Um faster. I think for me tonight, I think with your agreement to looking at the uniform change by the start of the school year with the idea of having quarterly reviews. And um you know, I'll leave it up to the negotiating units on the incentive pay. I just wanted to send a flare that that's something I would support. I'm okay with moving forward. I think the two-year agreement makes sense, but I do want a one, like I wanna end of the school year check in. And I wanna be engaged in the quarterly reports, not like me engaged like I'm sitting in. I wanna hear the outcome of them. Uh personal information stripped aside, I'd like to be able to read that quarterly. If those things we can agree to, I'm I. Feel good moving forward and just saying that so much has changed since twenty twenty. Who's leading the school district? The school district's in charge. What our role is as the city council and what we're being asked. We're not being asked, do we want school resource officers or not? We're being asked to say, does this agreement that the school district is asking us, um can we do it? And I think with those kind of caveats, I'm comfortable moving forward. Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, I I'm I'm not. Um I have spoken to a couple um folks in the community and board members as well. So I think there's maybe a miss there. Um my discomfort stems from, you know, two things. One, it's a huge big-ticket item for us. And so if we're gonna pay for it um at the level that we are, that we need to feel like this IGA represents what we want it to do. Um I also think that. You know, as a former high school teacher myself, like while I um celebrate the importance of engagement of our police community with our students. I do think that there's a time and place for those interactions. Um I we paid a hundred thousand dollars for a C change report. And I I I just, I don't see enough of the recommendations being implemented, so I am gonna make a motion. I hope that you all will support me and. At minimum, saying that we need to give this agreement a little bit more time. It can give us time to talk to some people in the community. It can give you some time to talk to folks on the school board. I've heard a lot of different perspectives. I acknowledge that some people might be supportive, but I think it's important that we understand all those perspectives, so. Uh I make a motion to delay the discussion of this IGA. City attorney, help me out.
We need a date or something because office like the contract will stay in place while we do this. And we are ending the school year tomorrow, but starting, so I think it's important if you wanna delay that. Your motion include a date and some expectations around the delay.
Sure.
One way to do that is motion to table until a date certain. What that date is, you need to decide. But I moved to table this matter until and then state a date.
I moved to table this matter until July. Pulling up my calendar.
Eighteenth.
Thank you, eighteenth twenty twenty-three. Oh, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Will the recorder call the roll?
Oh, there may be some discussion, I think.
Counselor Duggar.
Yeah, I was.
Okay, thank you. Um. Um I'm I'm okay with this um stay, but um I think we need to have a clear expectation. Um I don't want to continue the discussion, just to continue the discussion. Um I I want an expectation where um as the mayor has um stated before that we want. I want clear expectation from the school board, their actions. Uh we are partnership, yes, we are servicing of your partnership, and then this IGA. We have financial uh agreement in a sense next few years, but we're gonna ensure that we are committed to this providing services. So um I don't know how you're gonna go about wording it, but. By the next time, I wanna have a discussion or someone at some kind of commitment. And we want clear expectation from the school district and their actions. Um or that conversation should occur. Um I'm hesitant to uh continue the contract. With with assumption that I don't wanna give school district a just district an assumption that we're gonna keep providing these services. Uh we might not able to, and we should be keeping time and or warning. That one day we might not be able to give the services, so they should prepare and they should train their staff. And I think that should be discussed also. I don't know how I'm gonna word it, but I'd love to stay, but.
Well, I think the other important piece to recognize here is that the school board is not voting on this. This is administrative for the school district, so it is the superintendent. And so the way that this motion or expectation needs to be that, that the school board, that like the way that their structure operates is different than ours. So they're not voting on this. Their superintendent makes the agreement, and so. What clearly do we wanna see by tabling, I think, is what Counselor Kimmy is saying, and do you have any? We are we are currently in a contract, so this motion would not say we're not going to provide the contract, so like that can't be part of what we're voting on to keep it in place. It's about tabling tonight's discussion, not ending the contract.
Think also you could um make clear to the city manager um and others. What information you want to come back? Not make it necessarily part of the motion itself. But you know, I would expect that on the eighteenth, we would have this information would be the type of direction that could be given outside of the motion itself, just to table to a date certain to pick it back up on that date.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Duggar?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I I was gonna actually kind of outline my expectations. I can support this delay with with the condition that we get some language around um, uh, in the if it's appropriate, and I think it is, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it is the M O U, but but I'd like to see uh, a specific commitment around modifying uniforms, even if we don't have maybe specific commitment uh, isn't the right word. Maybe it's just a commitment to evaluating that. Um, specifically the data that when the dashboard is gonna go in, I think is really important. We need to hold ourselves accountable there. And then a definition of extreme violence. Uh, I think even if we can't get super specific, I just, I feel really uncomfortable with that. Um, and then again, for me, like if we can find some sort of neurodivergent training uh, in the next month, at least get it in there that 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 I don't know, may maybe that's not required. It's just super important to me. So those are the three, you know, the the four things that will make a successful I G A to me. But I can support this delay if we can actually get those things in there.
Counsel President.
Thank you. Um, I am also in support of the delay. I do agree with the sentiment that's been expressed that I feel like city council is being put in kind of a weird situation because uh, just the nature of this, that the the B S D is not having to approve the I G A and we are. I think that given that we made an investment in the report and the investment that we make through our budgetary allocations, I would really like to see this I G A have some updates that are more reflective of the recommendations in the report. So um, I support the uh, ask around the commitment around coming back with a proposal around the uniform adjustments that could potentially be made. Um, I would love to see, um, I know Chief you shared that the dashboard will be published, and so we know right that from that, that it will be publicly accessible, but I would love to potentially include that it's a a monthly update rather than a semester update. Um, and then the last thing that um, I don't think we've touched on yet, but that I think would be really important, and I have seen in other I G As is to add that purpose statement into the I G A. What is the purpose of our Y S O program? Um, I think that will help really convey the commitment to our community about the importance of like why we're taking this time to reevaluate the I G A. I think I just need something more than the preamble for me to feel comfortable with what this program is.
Counsel Teeter.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, I would support this motion to move the or to table it to the next month um, at the date that Counselor Hassan specified. Um, I agree about uniforms. Um, also Duggar made a lot of great points about neurodivergent trainings and supporting um, kids with different um, abilities and ways that they think. Um, I would also like to see a little bit more clarification about involvement with kids who are going through mental health crises. Um, I'm still very interested in that one-year term contract just because our budget situation is so dire. Um, and then Beaverton School Board is talking about, or at least is at least hearing about this from from people tonight at their board meeting with their budget conversations around this. So I would love to um, hear about how those conversations are going. I know I can call up a couple of school board members afterwards, but having a little summary of that would be helpful. Um, I think that's it for me for now.
You can also watch their meeting. That would be a way to hear directly from them instead of having staff summarize it. You get it from your perspective. Counsel Tibnan?
Yeah, thanks. Just as a little bit of background, um, some might not know this, but in my uh, first year on council, maybe into my second. Uh, myself and Counselor Sansusi were tasked with um, being part of actually helping create the R F P that was um, sent out into the world of which we got several responses and C changes was one of them. Um, and they were ultimately selected to be the consultant to do this work. But the underpinnings of that was uh, that the school board and the city of Beaverton came together. Um, knowing that the the existing iteration of the S R O program as it was needed to be redefined for a new now. And uh, so we worked with a couple of school board members and uh, drafted language and in it there was always at every step of the in that process, and it was a process to get that all done. It was always understood that the council was providing feedback. But that this was a decision for the school to make on how they they determined what they needed. And so I I am basing my my ultimate uh, decisions on on that foundation. Um, what I've heard tonight is that there's there's uh, a lot that's been shaped and formed that I think is very responsive to the sea change report. I and I I'm trying to wrap my head around a lot of the emails we've gotten, and some of the language in it, I frankly, I I think is completely contradictory to what I am seeing on paper. So that that's something I wanna sit with that a little longer. Um, because I'm I'm having trouble reconciling some of the anger I'm hearing and concern with what I'm actually seeing, what I've heard tonight. What I've heard tonight seems like an extremely measured response and very responsive to the concerns that we've heard in the community. And I'm frankly very proud of our police department for the work that they're doing to shape this new youth services um, uh, officer program and what it could look like. And uh, but I also recognize that we also have some other things here that are unaddressed. And um, so having the time to do that, I'm in support of that as long as we get this done. Um, this summer, and so we have clarity on it. Uh, the last thing is that why I think that it makes sense to push it out a little bit, niche it out a little bit, it's twofold. One, school board is meeting tonight, so this, I I would really like to hear how that goes before we we sign our part on this. Um, and then the the last part of it is, uh, you know, this, we did a whole lot of work leading up to this, and it 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 came up rather quickly. I think it caught some folks off guard. A track being one of them. A track actually had a member that was on the selection committee that approved the consultant way back in the day. Seems like forever ago. It wasn't that long ago. Um, and and so I I think that we need to pull all of these people along with us and having some more time to digest this themselves. It it it's an honor to them, um, because they're they're part of why we got to where we are today. So, um, yeah, I'm I'm in support of it.
Counsel Hassan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I am hopeful in terms of some of the changes I'd like to see. It's actually what I've already heard, so I feel like y'all might already know this. Um, the monthly reporting, I think, is super important. If there are ways for us to talk more about limiting the scope of work. Um, I really wanna be thoughtful of mental health. Like I got a call a year and a half ago. A gal was in a mental health crisis. She was handcuffed. The cop police felt that she was a danger to students. I understand that perspective, but it that's just one of those that tension points of like, did you guys know you can call a mental health response team? So really would love to get that crisp. Um, and to Counsel Duggar's point around training, um, I I would add anything around because we brought up a a population of neurodiver- neurodivergent um, communities, uh, immigrant and refugee communities as well, because that's one that we serve. Um, I acknowledge that maybe we can't. I mean, it'd be lovely if we could require those trainings. Um, I know that that can be challenging, but if we could push those trainings. Um, the other piece, I just, it's like sitting with me, and it's kind of like to what Counsel Tibnan said, like where is the school board on this? And so I'd love like, um, you know, whether it's, you know, like is Gusta, is the superintendent saying like he wants home base in every school? And if yes, like come and say it. And so that for folks who are reaching out to us, we can say like, here's where this is at. Cause like, I'm inclined to go with the sea change third-party consultant report and my loved experience, which is no home base. That said, I wanna respect the request of the school district, but I'd like to, like, I'd like to know that, like, that that's something that's that's really strong. I believe that because it's in the I G A, and yet we are the recipients of quite a bit of testimony. So, um, I am thankful for everyone's support in this. I do wanna say, Chief, and to the folks that are listening, like, we know how hard you work. This is not about the work that the police do. It's just about understanding the lived experiences of our communities. I come from communities where people really are very, very scared and terrified of police, and I know we wanna build engagement and connection around that. And I wanna be really intentional and thoughtful around how we build that in a way that makes people feel safe and centers their safety specifically. Thank you.
Okay, um, I do think we have some direction from the city manager. I think she's taking notes because I could see her reaching down and doing it on what we'd like to include. I do wanna echo, I think the frustrating piece about this is that we are uh, voting on something that was directed from the school board. I do think while they they're not voting on it, they gave their superintendent direction similar to what we do. We just have a very different voting uh, procedure and how we operate. Um, and it's challenging because we're elected officials making decisions, giving direction to a city manager, doing a lateral move with the superintendent that's hearing from their school board. I that's the challenging piece with this. Um, I do think what we've asked for is reasonable. I think we can get that into an I G A. When I encourage our council, though, we don't have a lot of space to to kick the can after next month. So spend your time reaching out. Um, you know, I talked to the school board chairs in four different districts yesterday about their opinions, how they're handling S R Os. Um, I got feedback. Every district was a little bit different. Um, I think the sensitivity that I have with our particular district is that we're only half of what the response is. And so they have to agree to the change, but it also has to be reciprocated because we can't have half of our students experiencing one thing and the other half experiencing another. Plus, I know the S R Os feed down into the elementaries as well, and it's not as cut and dry as the five, you know, high schools and how they're operating. Um, I wanna say that I think this process has moved um, slow, but the speed it needed to go. I think that engaging two really big entities to come agreement is challenging. Um, you know, my family this year um, had an engagement with an S R O over my daughter's safety in the school. And we had a wonderful, wonderful experience, and I recognize that um, our experience falls into the the violent category that I think with, you know, no parent wants to talk to an S R O in that situation. Um, and so I definitely see the need of what we we need, some boundaries on what they're engaging. When we're writing that definition of extreme violence, I think we need to leave situation for sometimes things turn into extreme violence, and how are we going to handle that? Um, that's my piece of concern with Vic, in a very narrow definition on what extreme violence means. Um, and as far as mental health services go, I think we need to engage the county. Um, because we are a municipal government that doesn't do mental health services. And so how is the county's mental health team engaging in this process with young people as well? Their school-based health centers in Beaverton, what are their their mental health trained sidees doing in these situations? We're only a tiny piece of the puzzle, and I think a lot of this has to do with the school district itself. Um, so homework for the council. To watch the school board meeting yourself, write down the things of concern, reach out to the school board members with your concerns. Be prepared for a conversation in the I G A. It would be helpful from our staff if we had a day or two to review it prior uh, to us having to vote for it in July. Recognizing our council works, it cannot be dropped on us at noon for a Tuesday meeting. So what the building the timeline back to give us enough time to respond. And I think the council will come ready to to make a decision if all of those things like are done and a time for us to uh, have a vote in July. Um, do we wanna actually make the, does that date work for the city manager now that we're looking at this? We have a holiday in July as well.
Um, I it's the superintendent will be out of town. Um, the chief will be out of town. Um, but there's not, that doesn't mean that we can have people come in their stead. Um, it just depends on whether the the council is comfortable with that. Otherwise, I can find a different day in July.
Is it, do we meet on the twenty-fifth?
Um, I don't believe we do, but that doesn't mean we can't do a calendar check.
Okay.
So it would either be the eighteenth or a day that this council's available, and I can start working on that um, immediately following the meeting.
Is that a friendly enough amendment, City Attorney, or do we need to?
I think that if we understand that we're going to first try the eighteenth, and what you'll do is if that doesn't work as a practical matter, find the next available date. If Counselor Hassan doesn't have an issue with that, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
See her shaking her head saying, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, uh, well, I think we have marching orders for the chief and for our city manager, and what is left is the official vote. So will the recorder please call the roll?
Counsel Hartmire Prig?
Yes.
Counsel Teeter?
Yes.
Duggar?
Yes.
Tibnan?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna let the council president take over for the next couple of minutes, and I will be back.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm going to start. Um, well, first, thank you, Chief, and our Y S O staff for joining us. So thank you for being here to answer questions. Um, we had a lot, so it's, I'm really grateful we had you here to talk through this with us. Our next agenda item is a proclamation, so I'm going to make a proclamation, but on behalf of the Office of the Mayor of the City of Beaverton. Whereas the month of June is Immigrant Heritage Month, and June twentieth is World Refugee Day. And whereas an immigrant is a person who is living in a country other than their country of birth, and immigrants in the United States may be here pursuant to different types of immigration status, including U S citizenship through naturalization. And whereas a refugee is someone who has experienced or fears persecution by their government or a force that their government cannot or will not control because of that person's race, religion, nationality, political opinion, or membership in a particular social group. And whereas over twenty thousand people who live in Beaverton were born outside of the United States, including immigrant and refugee residents from countries around the world that enrich our city, state, and nation by making us better, stronger, more innovative, and more prosperous. And whereas immigrants and refugees make tremendous contributions as elected officials, public servants, teachers, artists, faith leaders, community organizers, entrepreneurs, physicians, innovators, factory workers, first responders, frontline workers, and more. Whereas Immigrant Heritage Month offers opportunities to recognize the accomplishments and contributions that immigrants and their families have made in shaping our nation's history, enriching our culture, and contributing to the economy and success of the United States. And whereas World Refugee Day commemorates the nineteen fifty-one Convention on the Status of Refugees and provides an opportunity to recognize the strength and resilience of refugees who have fled conflict and persecution in their home countries in hopes of reaching sanctuary and a better life in the United States. Now, therefore, on behalf of Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, I do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-three and June twentieth twenty two, twenty-three respectively as Immigrant Heritage Month and World Refugee Day in the city of Beaverton, and urge all residents to join us this month in recommitting to our values as a welcoming city and in celebrating immigrant and refugee cultures, heritage, leadership, stories, and resilience. All right, our next agenda item is a presentation, the Metro twenty twenty-three quarterly update by Metro Counselor Garrett Rosenthal. Counselor, I will turn over the floor and thank you for your patience as we got through our last agenda item.
Uh, thank you, Council President Hartmire Prig and Ma- Mayor Beatty and to the rest of the council. At first, I I have to say, as a former teacher in a small, much smaller school, I really found that that long discussion you had, both very reasonable, very rational, and also very informative. Uh, it makes me glad that Metro doesn't deal with education. These issues that you are facing are very complex and require a lot of nuances and a lot of understanding, so I I learned a great deal. So uh, with that, thank you for giving me a little bit of time. I'll try and be brief and cover just the stuff that's important. Um, unless you have other questions. First of all, I want to introduce the person running the slides is Jeff Kane. He's the interim uh, policy advisor. My uh, normal policy advisor is off doing some uh, liaison work with the government of Mexico down in Oaxaca, um, enjoying, I hope he's enjoying himself. Uh, that's Eduardo Ramos. So but so Jeff Kane will be running the slides. So uh, this is basically, I just wanna get before the city council on a regular basis and say what's going on. There's a lot of stuff going on, but I'll try and hit the highlights that are of most importance in Beaverton at this particular point in time. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, land use convert, first slide. First of all, I'd like to say a proud First of all, I'd like to say I proudly serve District Three, which includes about half of Beaverton, the southern half of Beaverton. Uh, Councilor Gonzalez serves the the northern half of Beaverton. So I I find it's it's an interesting area. Uh, land use con conversations, as you know, we're updating the land use plan, having to evaluate whether we need more land for the urban growth boundaries. Uh, as you know, uh, we did a trade that's been sanctified by the by by Luba and and by the legislature that allowed the transfer of some lands, five hundred acres to Tigard, so that they can expand their river terrace area. That's important. As you probably also know, there's some very important land use conversations that are being discussed in these last couple of days of the legislative session, particularly S B four, which would allow the governor to set aside industrial lands outside of the urban growth boundary if there is such a need. It's this sort of a one-time thing that could affect five hundred acres. Uh, one of our, one of your neighboring cities has actually put in or appears to be putting in an application for expansion of the urban growth boundary to accommodate this. That would be North Plains. The other thing that's going on is S is H B thirty-four fourteen, which includes several positions. One is that it would limit the city's abilities to deny variances in certain cases, which a lot of the cities were concerned about. And then now it's been added to a particular provision of that, which would allow the metro area to add through city applications of seventy-five acres each up to six hundred acres outside of the current urban growth boundaries without going through the standard process. Uh, as you know, the legislature was in abeyance for quite a long time, and we really don't know how these things are all going to come out at this point in time. Safe Streets Grants, the metro got about four point two million dollars, some of that is going to be.
Is it him or us?
I think it might be.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't hear it either.
The screen has frozen.
By the time your pot's back on, I'm sure he'll be done with the presentation.
It feels so good to not be the one that this is.
We'll see if he joins us again.
It happened to me three times today.
I'm trying to contact his aide.
Uh, hi, that's me, I'm sending him a message right now, so hopefully we can get him back online.
Well, maybe we should get our next presentation up. All right, uh, let's go ahead and move with our next presentation and we can reset Counselor Rosenthal when he is able to join us again. Just making sure he's not in the attendee list here. All right, Cassandra here in a a different fashion tonight than Vera. With that, I will turn it over to you.
Well, good evening, everybody. I am honored to be here. I convey regrets on behalf of Chief Weiss, who had a a conflict he couldn't resolve. But I am excited to talk with you about something that I'm probably more adept at than tax increment financing. So we'll cruise through this and I will yield if um if our metro partner comes in. So thanks for your time and attention. I'm here to give you an overview of the state of the district for this past year. Uh, we are about to finalize our strategic plan through twenty twenty-eight. And we really tried to make this simple because we have the expectation that every single one of our employees understands that plan and that it's tied to everything from promotional process to budget processes. And we're all unified through our commitment to providing effective and reliable emergency response and doing that in a healthy environment with a significant performance expectations. In the category of health and performance, because we organize our strategic plan through health performance and opportunities, is succession planning. In the next five years, sixty-three percent of our mid managers all the way up to the fire chief are eligible to retire. So that's both on the line and not on the line. This past year alone, we have conducted promotional processes for lieutenants, captains, battalion chiefs, district chief, assistant chief. Uh, and there's more to come, as well as you've probably heard that we will be doing at least two recruit academies for firefighters and paramedics every year for the foreseeable future. We're still catching up from the pandemic pause. Uh, and we will be, because of all the attrition that I mentioned, we will be doing that for a long time. We are not facing the same staffing issues that you probably heard about heard about last year, which is where we'd have to be ordering back people on a fairly regular basis to work shifts that they didn't plan. Um, that is because of the academies that we've been able to bring online and we're really happy for that. So we've gotten creative about our recruitment. Um, I'm gonna see if I can share this, I hope it works. Um, we'll see. But we are leveraging all those young firefighters that we have and they're social media savvy. Hopefully you follow us on social media, but I'll give you an example of the kinds of things that we're doing to resonate with younger, more diverse candidates.
You're already here. We don't have a lot of time, you've got to fire a district, so come with me. Here's what you need to know. Starting December second, Twalton Valley is hiring firefighter E M Ts and firefighter paramedics. We're a big district, so there's a lot of opportunities. We're looking for compassionate and driven individuals that are safe to communities. If that's you, start getting your paperwork together. That includes your fire team's words, C P S, and any licenses. For more information, check out our website, individual, better save up to you. If that's you, start getting your paperwork together. That includes your fire team's words, C P S, and any licenses. For more information, check out our website. And we're putting on new videos. Right now, I gotta go.
So that is firefighter Priscilla Tapara, and she was out of, working out of our Beaverton main station during that particular thing. So we're just, we're trying to be, we're trying to resonate with all of those young people and reach everybody from uh, the folks that will see us in traditional outreach, uh, as well as people that will watch us on TikTok. So, um, related to the bond, you may recall that in twenty twenty-one, voters approved a bond. We retired old debt, so this has been cost neutral to all of our residents. Uh, but our primary focus this year has been working through the land use process to replace our Aloha Fire Station. Uh, we'll also, we're also analyzing the needs at our training center. And City Manager Hariyama recently went through the uh, Community Academy. And so she's, she can probably appreciate, as have others that may have gone through the Community Academy, how outdated it is. So we're excited about that. And then we will also be focused on remodeling that Beaverton main station, as well as one of our Newburgh stations here in the next couple of years. So you will probably recognize the profile of responses like last year. Um, the situation dispatched is not always the situation found. But uh, the reality is that at least seven out of ten calls that we go on includes some facet of emergency medical care. So um, this means that we have at least one cross-trained firefighter, paramedic on every single apparatus. Oftentimes, there's as many as four on an engine or truck, and then we have medic and rescue units as well. In total, there were over fourteen thousand calls within Beaverton city limits. And then there are five fire stations in the city limits. Um, stations from all over the fire district would be, uh, are able to respond at any given time. And we move up units uh, when calls occur based on where uh, those units are in our system and utilizing automatic vehicle location. That hot uh, that map that you see on the right, that shows the hotspots, the concentration of calls that we have. Oftentimes, that correlates with an assisted living center. Um, so we really are going to be trying to focus some of our community risk reduction efforts on places that we see a frequency in calls. We made big strides this past year in technology. The photo that you see on the upper right, that's called a Lucas device, and that delivers mechanical CPR. We recently celebrated our first save with one of those devices. We have six total now in the fire district. And this makes doing CPR, when you are, uh, when you have a patient in a bumpy vehicle or in less than ideal settings, very easy. It also allows you to uh, continue to focus on defibrillation and other advanced care. So we, as you've probably heard in the past, are seeing incredible survival rates when people who suffer cardiac arrest, it's witnessed, um, and that is, that's a testament to the whole system. Uh, we're also able to capture medical data in the field faster and better and to convey that to hospitals in advance of a patient's arrival. We're able to monitor our medical, or I'm sorry, our medicine inventory uh, much better now at any given time. And then the picture on the left, that's a battalion chief in training. And we're using increasingly uh, realistic scenarios with audio visual. Um, ultimately, we'll be doing virtual reality so that our battalion chiefs and others can train to manage those really complicated calls. Did a ton of training last year. It felt good to be back doing training uh, in person traditionally over a hundred and one thousand hours of training in total. Um, about twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty of those hours were in EMS. You might wonder, with so much of our call volume being medical related, why that number isn't higher? And that's because we get a ton of that exposure in the field. So really, those EMS training hours are focusing on those acute calls that we may not do as often so that we have the muscle memory needed to perform well when crucial seconds count. Uh, you may have heard about the ambulance transport uh, contract change in Washington County. Uh, we have, like other places nationally, experienced difficulty in the EMS system, specifically in Washington County. We've had some challenges for decades, um, which include uh, often having no ambulance, the private ambulances available to transport at any given time. This is called Level Zero, and that means that fire departments need to fill that gap and be kind of the safety net when someone needs a trip to the hospital. And that creates some difficulty. Um, we do still, even though improvements have been made between twenty-four and forty-eight transports to the hospital um, every week. And so uh, we've been part of a group led by the county and private partners to assess all of the issues within Washington County related to medical transport. As a result, they had a new contract, um, and they have selected a new provider. The county is in negotiations with American Medical Response with the expectation that the new provider will take over in August. So um, we're hopeful that this will um, this will improve the overall system. This also included a lot of performance metrics, accountability, and transparency within the system that we hope will mean um, better and faster response times for anyone that might need a trip to the hospital. We did a ton of in-person education, we're back up to normal levels. Uh, we did over three thousand fire inspections. Those happen at critical facilities like schools, hospitals, places where people congregate in large groups or we have high risk that could include manufacturing or hazardous materials facilities. Um, we taught thousands of kids hands-only CPR. That's a big focus point for us to ensure that people know what to do if someone collapses from cardiac arrest. We did a lot of post-fire education, meaning that after a fire occurred in an area, doing what we call knock and talks to talk with folks about ways that they can practice their home fire escape plans and make uh, the community safer safer. And then also having increased focus on what's called community risk reduction. So identifying those areas that we see a spike in calls to nine-one-one, where there might be a proactive intervention that could make a difference. Uh, you may know our community risk reduction manager, Kim Hahn. She spent the past year with a cohort from the city of Beaverton participating in the Bloomberg study with the focus on houseless individuals and how to better respond to and um, support those individuals. So a pretty critical uh, program that the city of Beaverton was immensely helpful with is uh, at the El Monica Station, where we, over the last five years, have gotten thousands of calls to nine-one-one. Essentially, um, houseless individuals ride the Trimate to the end of the line because they don't have anywhere else to go. They find themselves stranded um, outside the city limits with no resources, oftentimes cold, hungry, and in distress. And the only thing they have is a payphone to call nine-one-one, which usually means that our crews are out there responding after midnight on a dozen or more calls. So in partnership with many, many people, including the city of Beaverton and Trimate and a lot of our not uh, for-profit organizations to support folks. Now they're actually, there are resources there at the end of the line to get them to a shelter, to get them wraparound services. So instead of seeing especially um, like in an acute weather event, cold weather event, where we would have, we had a hundred and ninety-eight people over the span of three days that got help with what they needed with only one emergency department transport. Whereas previously, all those individuals would have gone to an emergency department that was already considerably strained. Um, so we will be, and you may have already heard this, and you'll be receiving a copy of our annual newsletter in the mail this week. We, our Board of Directors is expected uh, to refer a ballot measure in May of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we are dependent on a local option levy, and that funds at least ninety-two of our firefighters and paramedics, as well as as some support positions. What we know about this is that our levy expires in twenty twenty-five. We also know that our current uh, revenue is not keeping up with the cost of inflation and the increasing service demands on the nine-one-one system. So it's anticipated that that levy will be a replacement at a higher rate. The current rate is forty-five cents per thousand. So once our board has made that final decision, we will update you accordingly. So with that, and I'm talking furiously because I know you've had a long night of business, I open it up for any questions. And I'm very grateful for the time you've afforded us this evening.
Uh, sorry, just handing off the baby there. I do want to say we really appreciate uh, the district's willingness to let Kim participate in the Bloomberg. We recognize that um, you know, asking for staff time is no easy task, almost harder than money sometimes. Uh, but having tracked the process, uh, it's been really wonderful to have our um, special districts participating with us in a problem that requires much more than the city of Beaverton to solve. So I think we'll get a full-blown presentation on that shortly, but uh, it's been wonderful and we want to thank the district for our partnership in that. Um, I can't help but notice we continue to be the dark red space on your heat map of call for services out of sixty-seven. I wish that was different. It's not something I'm proud of, that the number one police fire station is in the city of Beaverton. But I think it's reflective of the neighborhood being older and where they're at and and the density we're creating in our downtown core. And so the more work we do with Bureau, the more housing we build. Um, I think, you know, we'll have to think about what a second station closer in might look like um, in the future, since that's where a majority of our growth is. Uh, with that, I know some of my colleagues want to make some comments as well, uh, Counselor Hussin.
Yeah, I just want to thank you. I mean, it's really interesting to see how you're focusing on different areas and like using that. Um, I'd love to just make sure like we're partnering with all the, you know, with with our police, like with our P D and all the right people. Um, and this was like a comment that I didn't get to say earlier, but it kind of applies. Um, you know, one of the recommendations from the C Change Report was initiating a cross-agency multidisciplinary team to make recommendations around like supporting youth that are struggling, um, and the non-law enforcement, public safety services like E M T and fire. So it's just, just so interesting because I like had these notes that I hadn't read and then listening to you and talking, hearing the mayor talk about that heat map. Like, I just, I hope we can keep having this conversation. So thank you so much for your work.
Counselor Teeter?
Thanks, I think most people who who have worked with me are familiar with me know that I love a good heat map, so I really appreciate that. Um, it, I'm looking at that, it looks like one of the hotspots is on Western, I'm guessing that's probably Kaiser or yeah, the medical office there. Um, there's another hotspot, it looks like it's probably Beaverton Transit Center or the, okay, Beaverton Town Square Transit Transit Center, I guess.
Well done, yes, yep.
Okay.
That was a hotspot for us, most definitely.
I think one of the things that's on my mind is I'm looking I think one of the things that's on my mind is I'm looking at this. Yeah, there is understandably. A higher rate of incidents in our central Beaverton area. I'm coming at this from the perspective of how can we as a city be proactive? And making, make it so that there are fewer incidents in the first place. So I think for me, help or understanding like. Are those medical and going to happen anyways as people age or go through their own health issues? Or is it issues with our street system and. Uh, car crashes or pedestrians being hit, like things like that. I just. If there are things that we can be doing proactively as a city. I would love to be able to do that so that you will have fewer calls to respond to in the first place. So just open, open lines of communication are welcome.
Thank you. And I think that your, um. Your ideas about correlation of calls is pretty, pretty astute. So we have a very aging population and that is very common to see an uptick in medical calls. That probably is not going to drop off anytime soon. You're seeing a lot of boomers come of age, right? Um, but as it relates to motor vehicle crashes, I think Beaverton's actually been pretty progressive. In some of their traffic management systems and traffic calming devices, we're thankful because your staff. Also works with us so that any traffic calming devices that are implemented don't slow down emergency response vehicles. The city of Beaverton was the first of all of our cities to adopt traffic calming measures that didn't impede that. Because some of those things like speed humps that you see, those cost us seven seconds per speed hump. So that can significantly, um, slow us down when we're on our way. So we're grateful because Beaverton's really been great about those kinds of things. Improved connectivity as it relates to transportation improvement. That's always helpful for us because congestion. Is driving some of our call times up. Um, so we, we will continue to partner with you on some of those things where interventions can be made. And then lastly, as I talked about with the, like with the houseless community, the fact that Beaverton is getting a shelter in place. And wraparound services and who has been at the front edge of getting those metro dollars that were allocated and other grants that are allocated. To address some of those needs and stabilize some of the folks that otherwise might be calling from the Beaverton Transit Center. Um, that's key. Mental health is continuing to be a challenge that is a call driver for law enforcement as well as. Fire and EMS, but, um, that's, that is a, that's a much bigger issue, right? Uh, we are going to, I neglected to mention that come January, we are standing back up our charm program. That's the Community Paramedicine Program where we go proactively to visit with some of our high utilizers of the nine one one system. And then if the legislature passes it, we are fairly confident that we're getting a half a million dollar grant to pilot a program. That has a nurse practitioner or a physician's assistant on a unit with one of our paramedics. To help people who might have, say, a urinary tract infection and an assisted living center where they can get treated in place. Given the medication that they need, given the care that they need, not go to the emergency department, have better outcomes. Um, without that strain on the emergency department system. So we are seeking ways to try to progressively look at. And you know, how to, we know some of our high utilizers, how can we engage with them? In a respectful, caring and better way that isn't just a trip to the hospital.
Great. Yeah, thanks.
Counselor Tucker.
Hey, I'm gonna be real quick because I know we're, but, but just wanted to put a bug in you guys in your ear, Cassandra, in, in, uh. Los Angeles last year recently per, started purchasing electric fire trucks. And I think that's a really, you know, like we are a, you know, we don't have our own fire department. You guys are our fire department, alright? So we, we, we can't set your capital budget, but it is something I think about with our climate action plan, like how we engage with our partners on. Uh, on, on, on a overall community response to the, the climate emergency. And, and I think I just want to put a bug, bug in your ear, like as you guys are expanding capital particularly. To support those Beaverton stations where your trips probably aren't that long. Uh, there are electric options out there and I'm going to be quiet because it is already getting late. Thank you.
Absolutely. Just a quick comment on that. Our fleet is looking at that. The challenge for us, just to be fully transparent, we just bought. A brand new tiller that's in the Beaverton station. Those are multi-million dollar purchases when they're fully equipped that have to last fifteen or more years. Uh, and so we, because all of our planning is done far in advance and we have to, you know, get bonds to buy them. There is significant capital purchases as buildings for us. We're a ways out from being able to actualize that. We're also wanting to make sure that they can perform in the way that it's promised. So I'm sad to say that we're, we're not going to be the tip of the spear as it relates to that. But we are, we're tracking it. It is part of our sustainability goal ultimately. And we're also watching Portland to see how the reliability of their new electric engine is as far as. Being able to run tools on scenes, being able to get places, being able to recharge between calls and things like that.
Oh, yeah. Next year, when you come back, I'd be really curious, uh, to throw that in the update too, just, just for informational purposes. But really appreciate you being here and good to see you.
All right. Thank you so much for being here with us this evening and for the great update. Um, has Counselor Rosenthal made it back into the room? Yes, Jeff, please.
Hi, uh, I just gave him a call and it looks like his internet service provider is completely out. Um, so he will not be able to be back tonight and we both want to offer our apologies for that. Uh, really sorry for the technical issues. And, uh, we'd love to be back and present to Beaverton again sometime soon. So I'll definitely reach out and see if we can make that happen. But thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Um, it sounds like Counselor Hussin's back to having issues too, and I feel like I should apologize. Uh, we, we're having a very, very important discussion, but if we could have gotten a little bit sooner, we might have. Got Counselor Rosenthal before. So thank you for being here with us, Jeff, and for conveying that message. Um. All right. So that concludes the presentation part of our agenda. So we're going to move with, does anyone need a quick break? Are we okay to keep powering through? Keep powering through. Okay. All right. So the next item, um, on our agenda is a public hearing. Um, about resolution four eight four five, which is a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year commencing July one, two thousand and twenty two. And making appropriations therefrom. Um, let me pull up my script. Um, wasn't quite ready to be the mayor, um, for this part of the meeting. So just one second and I will get my script up. Okay. So before we begin, I will address how we will, how to participate in this hearing. If you've joined the meeting by phone, you can enter star nine to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you join this meeting online, use the raise hand feature to show that you wish to speak. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing will have a maximum of two minutes. Um, but we will, uh, begin. Hold on, let me just check. Yes, we will begin with a stop presentation. So, um, City Finance Director Debbie Lockner, please, uh, proceed.
Well, good evening, councilors and, um, mayor and our council president. Um, I'm going to share my screen. Uh, so hopefully you can see this. Um, what we were doing is holding a public hearing to approve the resolution of adopting our supplemental, our final supplemental budget for the current fiscal year. So as we go through the year, things happen and, um, that could impact our budget and we have to make some adjustments. Um, at year end, the city staff in the finance department goes through, um, all the budget and the actuals to make sure that, um, we maintain a balanced budget. Um, and that we remain compliant with Oregon budget law. Um, and also at year end, our, some of our capital projects have concluded and we like to send the money back where if there's extra money, we, we give it back to the fund that, um, provided. The, the funding so that we get, we return it to the source. Each fund needs to remain balanced, um, at year end. So this supplemental budget is cleaning up, um, any potential budget violations, um, to make sure that we end our fiscal year with balanced budgets. Uh, additional appropriations are needed because we did have some cost increases that were not anticipated, um, in our janitorial services, our utilities. We had some long-term employees leave, um, and their payouts exceeded what we had budgeted. And then, um, some of our capital projects, uh, had some, uh, cost overruns due to inflation and supply chain issues. And then we're also including some grant expenditures, so, um, related to grants that we've received. So approving the year-end supplemental avoids budget violations under Oregon budget law. And, um, staff is recommending that the city council approve the resolution adopting the year-end supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? We've seen none. I will now open the public hearing. City Recorder, is there anyone here to testify?
No, Council President, there are not.
Thank you. There appears to be no member of the public who wishes to comment on this matter tonight. I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion? And can I tag in a counselor?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Teeter.
Okay, uh, Council President, I move that the council adopt resolution four eight four five. A resolution adopting the supplemental budget for the fiscal year commencing July first, two thousand and twenty two. And making appropriations therefrom.
Second.
Is it moved by Counselor Teeter and seconded by Counselor Duggar? Is there any discussion? Okay, well, seeing no discussion, we are ready for a vote. Would the city reporter please call the vote by roll?
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Hart Mya Prig.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Oh, hello, Counselor Rosenthal.
Yeah, my server somehow turned alive again.
Welcome back. Uh, I don't know if Jeff is still here. Um.
Uh, yes, I, I just texted him and said that I was back on.
Okay. Do you want to proceed?
Uh, we can do that, um, if you want. I don't know where you guys are at. I'm sorry about that. My. My thing goes out every evening for about a couple hours sometimes.
Oh.
I need to get a new ser, a new provider.
Yeah, uh, no worries. We just completed our public hearing, um. City Attorney, is there any issue with us bouncing back to Counselor Rosenthal's presentation for a few minutes?
No, there's no issue. We'll just continue. If, um, the slideshow though, I'm not sure if that's ready to be done without.
Alright. Okay.
It's up to you. I can just proceed and, and cover a few points and see if there's any questions, if, if that's your, your. Your procedures.
Yep, that sounds great, Counselor. Thank you.
Okay, I was, I believe I was talking about the, um, housing bond and the supportive services when I, when I last left off. The important points to know there is that if, if, after the, about the first year of, of the supportive housing services, it seems to be a bit of a success. We've put, uh, multiple thousands of people have kept, been kept from getting homeless and over a thousand people, twelve hundred approximately. Have been gotten off of the streets. Uh, the, uh, housing bond is, as I think I mentioned, we're about fifteen percent over. We're going to get up to about forty five hundred units. I just was at a, an opening down in Tuolleton, uh, just last Friday. And there's a lot more units under construction. So that's, it doesn't solve the entire problem, but that with supportive services is working. Probably the best news you hear for, for Washington County is that. You may have heard in the news that there is a corrective action, uh, agreement that's being worked out between Multnomah County and Metro. Because of, shall we say, the underspending of some of the funds. Some of that was due to the lack of getting, you know, uh, trained people to do.
Oh, no. I think of about ten seconds.
Yep, it's like a teaser for a movie. I'll get the full thing.
All right, um, I think we should move on. Um, if. Anyone has Counselor Rosenthal's, uh, number, if we can maybe just let him know. Thank you for coming. Uh, if he wants to send his report over email to us, we would appreciate that. Um, and we will move on to our next agenda item, which is action item two, three, one, three, four. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty three to twenty four, Social Services Funding Committee recommendation. So I'll invite Lisa Stiller, Hazel Wheeler and Megan Cohen to turn on your cameras.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Megan Cohen. I'm the staff liaison to the Social Service Funding Committee. I'm going to, um, screen share our presentation, so just hold for one minute. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, um, thank you for having us here this evening. We are here to present the Social Service Funding Committee recommendations for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. I have our chair, Lisa Stiller, here, as well as our vice chair, Hazel Wheeler. Thanks to both of them for being on through this evening, um, and being able to present these recommendations moving forward. Um, I just want to start also by, uh, giving a little bit of a shout out to our, um, whole committee. I really have, um, I think the best committee members, um, they're fantastic. They give so much time, uh, to this process. Which is really intensive, um, between really like March and, uh, to the point where we're at now. Um, they give over forty hours of, uh, their own volunteer time to reading these applications. Um, interviewing organizations, uh, scoring, um, and just being really thoughtful about how we go through the deliberation process. Um, and this year, um, is the first year that we have eleven members. So our board increased from seven to eleven members. Um, we now have nine regular members and two alternates. Um, and we run our process on consensus. So that means, uh, this year I think was roughly. Um, eight hours of deliberation between several different meetings. Um, and so these folks really, uh, get a chance to hash it out, um, and bring you, uh, the recommendation they have today. So I'm going to turn it over to Hazel to share a little bit more information about the process with you all.
Hi, everybody. Um, so just to bring you up to speed on what the process is, uh, applications are available in March. Um, one-on-one sessions begin with. The really amazing human being. So Megan, thank you for all that you do, but also what you do for the community. Um, and then applications are due in April. Uh, that's when the staff review, uh, as we go into May and June, that's when we really get into the review of the documents. Um, and then after the vote is provided tonight, uh, July is when the contracts begin and the grant cycle begins. And Megan is actually really, really busy. Um, next slide, please. So the funding priorities, just to remind everybody, our homelessness and housing, affordable after-school and educational programs, healthcare, hunger and immigrant refugees resources. Um, you'll definitely see in the, the next slide that we had, uh, a significant increase in. The number of applications. If you could advance that, please, Megan. Thank you. Um. So this year we had forty two applications and we interviewed twenty organizations. Again, as Megan stated, uh, the way that we make decisions is through consensus, consensus decision-making. Um, some of that is easy and some of it's not so difficult, or some of it's very difficult. Um, and then this year we also, um, tried to weigh the size of budgets and appreciate where funding sources are. So trying to understand that, you know, there are some organizations that do really, really great work, but their scope is fairly significant and fairly wide-ranging. That might be a little bit excessive for city funding, whereas we have smaller organizations that really could benefit from city funding. That might not be able to get that regional or national funding. Uh, so that was something that we really tried to take into account this year as we, we looked at the applications. And the next slide, please. So again, uh, forty two applications, we ended up recommending funding for twenty eight organizations. Not all are fully funded, uh, but nine of those organizations are first-time funders, six are fully funded. And again, just to give you the scope of what the, the request was, it was three quarters of a million dollars, was slightly over three hundred thousand dollars to fund. So there were tough decisions that had to be made. And I'm sorry, Lisa, that was actually your slide.
Great overview. Um, okay, we'll turn it over to Lisa to just talk through the recommendation, um. And, uh, some of the updates about what you'll see here.
Um, I just want to also say that working with this committee has been absolutely an amazing experience. Um, Megan is just a wonderful staff person and so supportive. Just, you know, give so much to us. Um, refunded, let's see, um. Returning recommendations, um, you can see some of them up there. Some of them that we were, you know, especially excited about were returning ones, but had some new programs such as SCAT, the St. Matthews. but had some new programs such as SCAT, the St. Matthew's Lutheran Pantry is now doing hygiene items for the community. A lot of these have expanded their reach, you know, adding more people who they're serving. So we were happy to fund them again. You know, refunding returning recommendations, we're also looking at, you know, slightly dropping the funding level as we try to add more new ones. I want to add college possible. I actually met some of the graduates of the program a couple of weeks ago, and they were just so overjoyed to get the chance to go through this program to do college. So those are some of returning recommendations. Next slide. And then our new recommendations, these are new ones. We had some really wonderful ones. We know that food shortages in our community have been big, so really happy to do things like Helping Hands and continue to fund the food pantries. We have two serving immigrants who are really excited about Silver Years, supporting Eastern European immigrants, refugees, we've, you know, seen coming into Bearden, and the one that's Emergency Shelter for Families, and also there is a Helping Homes, Household Items for Immigrants and Refugee Families, you're really excited about. These are all wonderful organizations, and we're really excited about having new ones. Next slide. Showcasing our successes in twenty twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, what some of these organizations actually accomplished. Two hundred and sixty-seven Bearden High School students received food bags that provided three meals a day during winter and spring break. And according to Beth L, this really helps the kids with school attendance and stay in school and, you know, come back after break. Twenty households received rent assistance to prevent eviction in Bearden, through bridges to change. Twenty-five Afghan women refugees received a sewing machine and sewing classes that decreased social isolation and increased social integration. Women Sew is an amazing group, and I hope we get a chance to visit them sometime. Hundred and seventy-two Latinx youth participated in culturally-specific after-school Chicas Program, with ninety percent of twelfth graders participants graduating, which is really huge, and going on to higher education. I think that's the last slide. I want to reiterate the thanks to the council, to Megan for the support for this, the funding. These organizations are amazing and doing amazing things for our community. Thank you very much.
We're happy to take any questions. I will stop sharing, but can pull it back up as, as needed.
Thank you. Mayor's back.
Sorry, we have a bit of a co-managing technique happening here tonight with the little Vice Mayor. Um, I would say that it's only taken seven years of me asking every single cycle for us to delineate from over five million dollar nonprofits to less one, so thank you for the, the slow uh, agreement to my request. I do think that it didn't penalize. There's some big businesses on there. They're still getting money like the Food Bank, but I, I think it's made space for some smaller nonprofits to join. I think that's really incredibly important to me. I think also, you know, working through getting to the other end to hopefully get our nonprofit incubator up and running to have that next level touch for some of these organizations that we're investing in in their, their infancy and in their, their, their idea to be something bigger. My goal is to partner them with some mentors and some other things to come along, so we can continue to see their growth. And it's important that we are not anyone's sole financial reason for existing, because in tough budget years, we don't want to be the reason that these nonprofits can't operate. And so I look forward to phase two. I would say this list this year is very diverse and really great, and I want to thank you guys for your hard work, putting together such a, a fun list of recommendations. And I know, having been recipients of this grant and managing it from the elected official side, you guys do wonderful work. So thank you. Counselor Hassan.
Yeah, and apologies, y'all. Like, the Wi-Fi is down in my house, so this is cell phone version of me. Hazel, Lisa, thank you so much for your work on this. Social Services Funding Committee is amazing, and it is absolutely game-changing. Megan, thank you for your work as well. I do want to leave you all with one thought. I'm going to support this recommendation. I know how hard you deliberated, and I think it's really important. I do want to make sure that we start being thoughtful around, like, you know, I noticed like two organizations that are focused more around domestic violence or like family justice, and I, I acknowledge that those are really big places. But I am reminded of a story that was shared with me recently of a family who couldn't find housing, and they called the usual suspects. And it's some of them are organizations on this list. And unfortunately, in those calls, they didn't receive housing. And Cool Islam, which is one of the nonprofits I work with, they, they put up this family in a hotel for a week. And so it's fine, like, I'm not saying that that means anything, but to kind of the mayor's point, like, sometimes the biggest organizations with the most resources are not always the most connected to communities of, 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 of great need. And so I'm super excited about this proposal, but I want to really make sure we continue to intentionally think about nonprofits that wouldn't necessarily be on this radar, don't know how to write good grant proposals. Like, I'll tell you right now, no one in my community, like, the Muslim Indian Pakistani community, they're not going to write good grant proposals. And so, like, I really want to make sure we continue to increase that representation and acknowledge that their proposals, like, I was looking at the scoring matrix, and I was like, yeah, like, if my mom wrote a proposal for some, for some funding for the communities that she serves every day, you know, at no charge, she couldn't, she couldn't write their grant. And so I'm super excited about this, but really want to push us harder. And, and maybe this goes back to the council, is like, are we identifying bigger priorities? We're going to have less in the future. We have less already, and so do we more narrowly define this? Or how do we just make sure we're being really intentional? Because I think this is a really great list, but I really want to be thoughtful of some of the immigrant and refugee organizations that I know that do the work every day, but don't know how to fill out a grant application. And I know, Megan, you're going to say, y'all did a great informational, I'm sure it was fabulous. I just know that in some of the communities where I live and play, that process of writing a grant, all of that can, can be really complicated. And so I know you know that, but I, I want to make sure you all hear it, you know, on the record from me. So thank you so much for your work.
Uh, great. And I, I do think Megan would be into come and doing a co-class with you in the Muslim Pakistani community on what they're looking at. So just tap them in. I think they would be great at doing it. They've done it with a lot of communities. Uh, Counselor Kimmy?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody who's involved in Social Services Funding, and Megan, I know you have been involved with this since the beginning. And I remember ten years ago when I applied for a grant and you rejected me also, but that's all right. The, uh, it's not great organizations, I'm for it, but as Counsel Hassan has reiterated, the, uh, when I was involved with nonprofits in my community organization, I know why we got rejected, because we couldn't write really good proposal. We have good intentions, we did a lot of work, but the problem with our community, small community organizations, is that we don't document things well, because everything's done on a fly with low budget. We don't have people in the office who's doing all this work. So either, either I or some leader have to do it. Uh, and, and I, I didn't know how to write a proposal back then, so when we do this next time around, I want us to be very intentional, reaching out to the very small organizations who we rarely hear, but you can, I think, we can tap into our diversity of privacy report, ask what are the small organizations that really working hard in their own neighborhood, their own community, and we can be, reach out to them and sit them down and then tell them that these funds are available and we can help you write the grant. So yes, we have came down from five million to one million to one hundred thousand, but there are very small organizations who has less than ten, twenty thousand dollar budget for the whole year. Uh, but I want to give them an opportunity to get a grant, few thousand dollars goes far in those organizations. They could throw feed five hundred people with two thousand dollars. You'd be amazed how much you can do with that small amount of money. And also, I want to also uh, emphasize that what the mayor has stated, that we can also connect them with the nonprofit incubator in the future, where we can help them be more established, and we can cultivate that into a thriving organization. Hopefully, that work is within your purview next time around. Thank you for all your services.
I just, I'll just add a quick comment, just since we're here, if anybody's watching, if any of the nonprofits are watching tonight, that I am happy to meet with organizations one-on-one in the process and offer direct feedback on their application. I don't have a vote in the process. The committee does all of the discussion and voting, so I, I am able to help facilitate through that process any suggestions about what would be helpful in sort of connecting to council priorities and sort of fully answering the questions, talking about outcomes, those types of things. So just want to share that uh, if, if there are organizations that would like to connect directly with our office during this process, or, you know, during the off months as well, I'm happy to, to meet and do that follow-up as well.
I'd like to follow up on what Megan said. I do know that organizations that apply, who we, you know, kind of want, you know, want to work with. Megan has really worked hard to work with those organizations the following year and have them reapply, and so they've actually gotten grants. So I do know that some of those organizations, Megan has put a lot of effort into working with, and also her comment about, you know, inviting new organizations, and I'm constantly out there searching, so any, any organizations, anyone know, we would love to hear about and love to speak to. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. I think the other thing for counselors to remember here is that this is taxpayer money we're giving, so accountability of funds is incredibly important. We have to report on it too. And so having come from the nonprofit sector, getting what you're asking for, which is called non-restrictive funds, is really hard to do based on the funding source. And so I don't know any government that gives unrestricted grant money with no reporting criteria because of our oversight requirement of government funds. So it is something to think about, but I do think, you know, if we're not the right place for some of those nonprofits, maybe we can build a list of funders. I mean, I know the Northwest Health Foundation does classes on this. There's other resources, so you know, I'd be happy to have a conversation with Megan about how we might help some of those other groups, because unfortunately, we have a different standard than philanthropists that give personal money. With that, we do have to vote on tonight's recommendation, so do we have?
A motion?
A motion, that word?
Yes. I move that we approve Action Item two, three, one, three, four, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four Social Services Funding Committee recommendation.
Edward seconded. Oh, I was saying Edward needs to do it, because he was rejected. He needs some vindication.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded by Council Kimmy. Uh, any discussion on tonight's motion? Okay, seeing none, will the recorder invite? Call the roll.
Counsel Hassan.
Yes.
She's mad I took her second away.
You did, yes.
Counsel Tivnan.
Yes.
Counsel Kimmy.
Yes.
Counsel Teeter.
Yes.
Counsel Duggar.
Yes.
Counsel Hartmire Prig.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Right. All right, with that, we are on to our last work session of the evening, Agenda Bill two, three, one, three, five, council meeting. We're going to turn that over to the city manager. And sorry, for those of you that have had babies, you will know that this is the bewitching hour, when she will only sit with me and she only wants to be here in our meeting. So go ahead, Jimmy.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a reminder, tonight's work session is in response to a council request to discuss meeting in person for both the first and the third meeting on Tuesdays of each month. Right now, you just meet in person on the first meeting of every month. And so at this point, staff's looking for direction in terms of, or feedback, and how you'd like to approach this and what you'd like to do. And I and staff are available to answer any questions that you have. Shortest staff report tonight.
Okay, well, I will start this evening. I like our current format, the way that we meet. I think having I, in my professional job prior to being the mayor, supported six school boards and have spent countless times in school board meetings to talk for ten minutes, based on when it comes up on the agenda. Um, the way that we do it now gives the city, a manager, the ability like tonight to program a lot of presentations. And just as we saw with the SRO report, we went way over the, the time allotted where we would have had people sitting and waiting for us. Instead, they were at home and able to jump in and do things. And I think that the city manager has keenly put stuff on the agenda that needed to be in person. I think there's value to that in our meeting now. But I like the flexibility. The other thing that I will mention is a a bit of a critique of our council. There is a lot of absences, way more than I've experienced in all the years that I've served on this board. I would say it was past practice for people to schedule their vacations around it. And so if we make a decision tonight to move forward, we need better agreement that, like, council meetings are the priority, because if people are missing from them, they're really ineffective. And so uh, for me, I would like us to keep it this way. If we're going to move forward, I would say we need a refreshed agreement. The council meetings are a priority that people need to attend, given extreme circumstances with jobs, we all get it. And that our staff come in to do the presentations if we're there in person, because I most certainly don't want to be there just with you guys looking at a screen. Uh, with that, Council President?
Thank you. Um, City Manager, I have a question. I'm kind of curious the, the staff perspective and the workload, and, and does, does it change whether we go virtual or in-person all the time? And, and if you've heard feedback from staff about the in-person one time, virtual other time?
Um, I, I mean, I would say, granted, it does provide, I mean, ultimate flexibility. At the end of the day, pre-pandemic, we were here in the chambers, serving the council, serving the community. So this is really council's decision. We can pivot and do what you need. I will say that there's some logistical things that we have to work out in the chamber with respect to AV, and so that will probably require me to increase our AV resources, so there will be probably a budgetary impact from that perspective. Um, but we, we can adapt. I think having the hybrid flexibility is definitely an important factor. But I would definitely want staff to be present in person if we are going to all meet in person when possible.
Yeah, thank you. I think my follow-up comment is just, I also really like the dynamic that we have in the in-person meeting, but I really love the flexibility of the, of the hybrid meeting that we have, or the virtual meeting like tonight's forum. I am someone that's had to travel for work, and us having that, I can always schedule my work travel around um, the virtual meeting. So like, if I needed to call in late, I could do that. And knowing that that first one is my in-person, so just knowing that we're a working council for me, that has provided me a lot of flexibility, and I've been grateful to have that. So my preference would be to stay in the way that we do it.
Counsel Duggar?
Yeah, I, I also travel for work. To me, I prefer us to be in person for both meetings, as long as, and here's the caveat, any counselor who is traveling has full access to uh, a, a virtual place. And, and I also like that option for our community member to testify. I think that's really important, and it has democratized a bit. But I also say, as a counselor, for me, I don't always make up my mind before I come to the meetings. Uh, and, and reading body language and stuff like that is easier for me in person, and it does help me become a better counselor. Having said that, like, you know, I don't think this is a bad system, but I would support us moving to two in-person, as long as we provided that flexibility for anyone, any counselor, and continuing public testimony virtually. Thanks.
Counsel Teeter?
Yep, I would support going in person each, for each meeting. Having that hybrid flexibility, like, I'm, I travel a good bit for work too, and uh, the days of the month that I travel are not always flexible, because sometimes it depends on when other organizations have their board meetings and things like that. Um, so there will be times when I need to be virtual. Um, and there will be times when we've got family situations or health issues, and we need to be virtual for that too. And I think that's okay. Um, I think having an option for the community to testify in person is very helpful. I've had a lot of people who I've had conversations with, when we've been able to have conversations where they want to get public testimony, and they're like, oh, man, you're online. I want to be able to be able to be there in person with you, that you can, like, see me and I can see you and I can feel a little bit more heard or feel a little bit more connected. So I feel like there's value in that. I do, I would like to keep the hybrid option for people to call in to give testimony too, though. So that if they are home making dinner or taking care of kids, they can, they can just call in and then, then leave and go back to whatever they're doing. Um, I'm also, like, I'm okay if staff are not there, if, if they're traveling for work, or if they've got a health issue or something that keeps them from being in council. I'm okay if staff are not there, if if they're traveling for work or if they've got a health issue or something that keeps them from being in council. Um I think the bigger benefit for me comes from being in the same room as you all, as my fellow uh elected colleagues. Um and getting that some of that body language and and personal reported, the the personal connection time together. And so I would prefer staff to be there, but if they're not able to, that's not a deal breaker for me. And I think that's it for me.
Alison? I'm sorry.
Uh huh. Um Alison's fine too. Uh but thank you. So I brought this up at our last meeting, asking that we discuss it as a group. And uh I I have some reflections on it. First of all, I'd like to say. There was always an opportunity to call in to the meetings if you were traveling for work. Councillor Fagan. Um did that quite frequently. He had a lot of international travel, which I don't know how he pulled that off, but he did. From what I understand, it was awful because if you've ever phoned in to a meeting where everyone else is in the room together, you can't get a word in edgewise. Everyone forgets that you're even there. And um it it but but it was, it was what they had available at the time. And it was made available. I think we were thrust into virtual, not through our own accord. And we got used to it, but it also revealed some beneficial parts. The the first is this chat feature is amazing. It it allows us to truly hear each other with not without crosstalk. Um and without uh people railroading each other if they're super passionate about something. And I I love that. And I love that when we did start going back in person for the one meeting a month that we. That we still use that. And so to me, that's that's some something that we pulled out of that hard time of the pandemic. That has made us better. And also, the fact that even when we are in person now, we still have people that are hybrid. We have. Commenters that phone in instead of showing up. We have some presenters that are um virtual. And it and it works really well because technology is there. We know how to use it and so on and so forth. Um something else that comes to mind for me is if we're, if we're here. And we have a visitor comment of someone who's in chambers, who's there and we're not. That does not feel right to me. That we had someone show up at city hall and stand in our chambers to give testimony. And we're there staring at an empty dais. There's something about that that. Uh lands with a thud for me. So just to throw that out there. Um but the reason why I I am very passionately for us going back in person. Is because of last week's meeting. We had a standing room only crowd of people that that showed up. And we got, I I made a point of looking every single one of them in the eye throughout the night. And there's there's something about that, that it's meaningful to them in ways that are hard to quantify. Just like it is to us when we're having conversations that are sometimes really difficult to to figure out how to navigate our way through. Um I'll also say I spent an entire year, my entire first year as a city councillor in a virtual world. And that first time getting up on the dais and sitting alongside my colleagues, after a year of doing this, I felt. The difference in a very tangible way. And the the tone and the tenor of the conversation was different. And I think uh different in ways that were uh you just cannot replicate in a virtual world. Um as far as the hybrid model goes, absolutely for us. Um as well as for people that are tuning in, make it as accommodating as possible. For people to show up and and be present. Um and if 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 one of us goes through a life circumstance where it just makes better sense for them to be virtual for a while. There's no judgment there. It's just that the this, the the baseline is that we're we're up on the dais. That's that's my desire for this. Um and I think I, I think I said everything I wanted to, so thank you.
I do want a expectation set for you councillor Tivnan. I've been doing this for ten years. I could probably count on two hands the amount of time that room's been packed out with people. So that is not the norm of what we experience, but when it's high controversy, it definitely packs the room out. But it's very few that I would think that would happen in the future. Councillor Hassan?
Yeah, um I support the 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 going to the in-person. I think it is something that our community is asking us to do. It's what we got asked to do. Um and I would support whether staff did or didn't want to be in person. I want to be super flexible and supportive to our staff who work really hard. Um but also to ourselves, like I, yeah, it's possible that I can't make a Thursday meeting. You all know that I've been um doing more international travel than I had planned. Um but it's allowed me to participate regardless, so. Um I I'm fine with the in-person. Uh I think my one ask would be is if and when we know someone is virtual. Just making sure that we tag someone in to kind of keep an eye on the person so that uh we don't lose sight of. Um and I don't know that that's happened uh too much, but you know, like if I'm the one that's virtual and y'all are in person, you know, maybe we tag someone into. Um maybe like, maybe not the mayor, the council president. There's like a third person who's just kind of making sure that whoever's on the phone can see and hear and participate. And and feel included. I actually feel like we do that really well, so I'm not super worried about it. So that's me. It's nine sixteen, so I'm just watching the time.
Councillor Timmy?
Yeah, as you all know, I want to go in person um from the beginning. Um getting away from my house and my office. That's great. Uh and also I like to be with all of you and read about body language and and interact. Before and after. And um and so I'm supportive of in-person, of course, hybrid option. That's all I have to say.
Uh city manager, uh since we're recessing in August, is a return in September doable? Or is an October date something unique?
Um it's the direction of the council. I can do either date.
I mean, I know it's our direction. I'm asking what your preference is from a staffing and technology standpoint.
Um September is fine.
At city manager school, they always put it back on us because it seems like the recurring thing. But we know it's our our decision, but we're trying to. We need your opinion here. You have to implement our decision.
Yeah, that's that's the call of the city manager. Um I I mean, seriously, I can do I either day if if I'm more conservative. I can do October to give us more time in case there's something that comes up, but it we are, we can pivot at any moment. Um so I would say, I would say September is fine um to do that. Uh and also just to let uh remind council, um since I oversee the organization, I'll direct staff as appropriate of who. Um will be there. Sometimes it's important that people are there in person depending on the subject matter. Um because it it matters on the essence of the presentation, but we will make sure to build in flexibility as po- um as much as possible. Because we understand how sometimes the meetings can go a little bit long.
Okay, so it seems like September will be the date uh for us, city attorney. Is there something?
Well, you know, details. Um you start right now at six P M. Uh if you started in person, are you going to want to have a different start time? Or do we just start with six P M? And see how that works and we need to adjust it. Yeah.
I think six P M, we already can chronically go really late and adding a half an hour seems very challenging.
I think six P M is fine. It's been working for the first meeting. I I'm seeing enough head nods.
Okay.
Which is reflective of the the um resolution that was attached to the agenda bill. So there's no change there. Um and then I would just take kind of um council's feedback to make that happen. Uh Bill's, Bill, you're there. I don't um necessarily think we need to come back and do any kind of codification of this. A council may want to leave this flexible in case they want to do a check-in or pivot at some point in the future.
Yep.
Right, because it sounds like the only thing that we're changing is virtual versus in-person, but everything else is remaining the same.
Correct. Very good.
I preliminarily, I think you're absolutely right. And I'll let you know tomorrow if I think of anything in between.
Right.
He'll sleep on it. Perfect. Okay, anything else uh before the council this evening? Alright.
I have a brief just announcement for um Pride is this weekend. Um I've been working with Shannon. She's been amazing to help get our float. Um ready to go. Um she and I are still working to confirm the details. It's looking like it'd probably be Sunday morning that we need help with finishing. Touch of decoration. So Shannon and I will be in touch soon with more details. Um I think the parade doesn't start till eleven this year, so we have a little bit more time. Um uh yeah, so I'll I'll share out more information or through Jenny or something depending um on how we get the information. But just want to remind everyone, it's Sunday, so time.
Uh and my office is sending uh email reminders to all of our delegation members up and down uh the ballot to to join us as well. So uh that way, you know, they could join us when we're marching as well. So we'll take care of that.
Just a quick announcement, I have a Korean War celebration for a ceremony that day, so I'll try to make it, but mind not.
Your wife can drive you because she doesn't want you at home very much, so she'll take you to one and then kick you out at the other. That sounds fair to me. So. Alright, see you guys Sunday.